So let's begin. Welcome to all. This is the meeting of the Carlisle Select Board on Tuesday, April 5th. And I'll review the agenda and then we'll come back and begin the meeting. We'll start with community input. And so if there is anyone on the Zoom call, because we don't have anyone in the audience here in person yet. The way you can indicate you'd like to offer comment is just to either raise your hand with the button down below or put your regular picture up, video up, you can just wave your hand and we will call on you. Then we'll, I should really do this first. I'm just going to jump out of order here and say that I would, I do want to welcome Steve Ledoux, who is our interim town administrator on behalf of all of us here on the Select Board and also the town of Carlisle. We are so glad to have you here. Thank you very much. Steve brings a very, very long history of experience in municipal government and we know already he's going to be a big help to us. So many, many happy days ahead, we hope.
Thank you, thank you.
Not for you.
Just got to get a little rust off it. I'll be good.
Yeah. We are not going to put you in charge of the Zoom meetings as your first assignment.
It will be a very short meeting if you do that.
So anyway.
I'm in charge.
Then we'll have the town administrator search update from me and go through some cemetery deeds. We have a dog hearing at 7:30. And then Carlisle Master Plan, Jack Tross, the Chair of the Committee, will join us and we have an hour set aside to provide feedback to him representing the Master Plan Steering Committee. Following that, we'll discuss some last minute preparations for the town meeting. And then we'll have some appointments to the Transfer Station Action Committee, the Town Administrator's Report, Liaison Reports, if anyone here has one to make, Approval of the Warrants, and Arrangement Plan for 10:00 PM. So with that, let me go back and ask if there is anyone that would like to offer community input this evening.
Do we have the full Brady Bunch without the universal people?
I believe so. Right, we're seeing Tori, everybody that's on the call. Yeah, because you can do gallery too if that makes a difference.
We don't even have enough for the Brady Bunch.
Okay, all right. Well, welcome to those of you that are here. So we'll just continue then. In your packets, you will find the posed appointments that I hope we will make tonight for those who are going to serve on the screening committee for the permanent town administrator. And those individuals are Mark Way, who is the managing partner of the Leadership Management International Company, who is also a resident of Carlisle and has also been helpful to the board, actually in previous years around goal setting. Peggy Wang, who is our Carlisle Town Clerk, Brian Soros, who's the Chief of the Carlisle Fire Department. Both Peggy and Brian are also residents of town. Victor Liang, a member of the Carlisle Finance Committee, Deepa Chunggi, who's the Chair of the Carlisle Parent Teacher Organization, Madeline Blake, who's the Chair of the Carlisle Planning Board, and myself as Chair of the Carlisle Select Board. And this group, the task for this group will be to work with John Petron, who's the Senior Associate at Community Paradigm Associates, which is the group that we hired to post the job posting for the Carlisle Town Administrator position. And he will be guiding this screening committee through their work, which is to then present to the Carlisle Select Board a short list of highly qualified finalists for our consideration. So a motion to make these appointments would be in order if someone is willing to do so.
I'll make a motion.
Pretty much.
Yeah.
Did the whole thing.
I'll make a motion. So I move that the following people be appointed to the Town Administrator Steering Committee. I think I'll say, you know, by looking through the list, I know they're all town residents, but the addresses will be added later. Barney Arnold, Chair of the Carlisle Select Board, Madeline Blake, Chair of the Carlisle Planning Board, Deepa Chunggi, Chair of the Carlisle Parent Teachers Organization, Victor Liang, Member of the Carlisle Finance Committee, Brian Soros, the Chief of the Carlisle Fire Department, Peggy Wang, the Carlisle Town Clerk, and Mark Way, Managing Partner, Leadership Management International, who's been involved in many other committees.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none? I'd like a roll call vote, please. Arnold, I.
Oscar Lillo, I.
Brown, I.
O'Dell, I.
Reed, I. Thank you very much.
Go team.
Go team. Before we go further.
Madam Chair, could I just add that I did talk to John Petron today. Deadline for applications is this Friday, the 8th. He said they've had a lot of inquiries. He didn't want to give me a number because he's afraid that would scare other people away, but he's pretty confident y'all have a good, you'll have a good pool.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you, Steve. Hi Peggy. You've just been appointed to the screening committee. Congratulations.
That'll serve you to come late. You got homework. If you were a little later, you would be on the Transfer Station Committee too.
Be sure to see the town clerk and get sworn in, would you please? Be sure to see the town clerk.
How does that work? How does that work? Oh, thought you liked one hand and the other hand. Do we have such? Do we have a such justice?
Yeah, great. Well, thank you Peggy.
A bit of town trivia.
Yeah, but nothing, that's great. I was just going to comment on something else, which is I got a note from Mary Lynn Bone about not being able to get onto the Zoom and I think it's because we changed it. And so I'm trying to think where.
I sent her the updated link and Jeannie as well. So both of them on the same one and Jeannie's on it.
Okay, so you, you think she has what she needs?
Yeah, she may just not have checked her email.
Oh, hi Mary Lynn, okay. Sorry, we, we had to change the Zoom link, but did you get it, get the new email with the new link earlier this afternoon?
I did and that's what it was. It said the meeting will start at 10:00 PM.
Oops. Did you, did, did you hear that Jen?
No.
Well, Mary Lynn just said.
She forwarded me the packet this afternoon and the link that was in that one said the meeting was starting at 10:00 PM. So forwarded me the old one.
Anyway, we'll see if we, well, thank you.
I get you forwarded a packet.
Yeah, well, we'll see if we hear from anyone else, but you passed on to Jeannie Genisco the, the link again?
Yeah, let me just confirm what Mary Lynn's email is. Maybe I got it wrong.
I can send it right now too.
Do that later, that's okay. All right. We're all good. Thanks Jen.
That wasn't the issue. It said it started at 10:00 PM. She got it.
Oh, she's checking the 10:00 PM, sorry.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just sent it to her.
Okay. Let's move on while we're waiting. Let's move on to the Cemetery Deeds, which is item four in our packets. And there are several of them. The word has gotten out.
It's out, yeah. While they're hot, while they're 200 bucks.
We're going to get our petty cash up.
Yeah, who would like to move the Cemetery Deeds, please?
I'll do it. I move that and I'm going to do them all at the same time. Deed 772, A Select Board Vote to Transfer the Land on the Public Burial Ground to Jeffrey Johnson and Sharon Kenny of 64 Blaisdell Drive, Carlisle, Mass. at Green Cemetery Lot D149, Grave 1, 2, and 3. Deed 773, I move that the Select Board Vote to Transfer Land in the Public Burial Ground to Karen Blake and Constance Tascinari of 15 Carolyn Way, North Andover, Mass. At Green Cemetery Lot D152, Grave 1 and 2, and they were former longtime residents of Carlisle. Deed 774, Move that Select Board Vote to Transfer Land in the Public Burial Ground to David Williams and Betsy Jackson of 48 Prison Hill Lane, Carlisle, Mass. at Green Cemetery Lot D153, Graves 1 and 2. Deed 775, Move that the Select Board Vote to Transfer Land in the Public Burial Ground to Elizabeth C. Barber, 100 Aldershot Lane, Carlisle, Mass. at Green Cemetery Lot C17, Grave 3. And deed 776, Move that the Select Board Vote to Transfer Land in the Public Burial Ground to Esther Kraft of 826 West Street, Carlisle, Mass. At Green Cemetery Lot D170, Graves 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Just to say, I guess to echo Luke, if we need to raise, anytime you rattle the sword about raising fees, we could just, you know, boost the petty cash. That's a good strategy.
We'll see if we get it all now, we don't have to worry about.
No, no, we'll raise some other fee. We'll raise some other fee and they'll, they'll race to the.
Great.
All right, I'd like a roll call vote, please. Arnold, I.
Oscar Lillo, I.
Brown, I.
O'Dell, I.
Reed, I. Thank you. All in favor. Then let's move on.
Should we like jump to?
We're a little early for the hearing, so let's take something else. Let's look. Yeah, why don't we do the two appointments that are in our packet? And this is for, this is down near the end of the packet for Carrie Patel and Karen Panico for the Transfer Station Action Committee.
I move. Oh, go ahead. You got it up?
I move that Karen, we point the following individuals to the Transfer Station Action Committee. Karen Panico, 187 Tobit Road for one term, one year term expiring June 30th, 2023. And Carrie Patel, 85 Tobit Road for one year term expiring June 30th, 2023.
Second.
Great, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Carrie, you're on. I think she's on. You're a glutton for punishment. Congratulations.
Thank you.
It does make you think what's going on on Tobit Road though, isn't it? They're both.
Right, right.
I'm super excited about this committee. I really am. There's a lot of really great people on it and it's going to make a great impact.
Yeah, I agree Nathan. And also people are eager to be on it. That's what's great about it. It wasn't, wasn't something that had to, arms had to be twisted. So yeah, it's really good. All right, hearing, no further discussion. Roll call vote, please. Arnold, I.
Oscar Lillo, I.
Brown, I.
O'Dell, I.
Reed, I. All right, it's unanimous. Great, thank you. I'm wondering if we should also take up the, under the Town Administrator's Report. We should not do number two about the community choice aggregation because that's going to take a little time. But could we do the Gleason Library request for a one day liquor license, Steve?
Yes.
For that?
Yes, the library's looking for a one day license for an art reception on May 6th from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM. They're all set with the liability insurance and I would recommend approval.
We have a motion.
I move the Select Board Grant a one day wine and malt beverages license pursuant to MGL Chapter 138, Section 14, to the trustees of the Gleason Public Library for an event to be held at 22 Bedford Road, Carlisle, Mass. on May 6th, 2022, from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM, subject to the applicant providing a host liquor liability insurance certificate.
Second.
And I did notice that it has been already signed off by the police chief, which we require before issuing these.
Any discussion?
What's the risk premium for?
Liquor liability case, you know, somebody leaves the premises, has an accident or.
That's enough coverage?
I believe so. I think our insurance carrier looked it over and recommended that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, let's have a roll call vote on this, please. Arnold, I.
Oscar Lillo, I.
Brown, I.
O'Dell, I.
Reed, I. Excellent. Looking down, should we do the?
Maybe he can get together.
I have seven minutes. I was going to say, yeah, Steve, do you want to do the number three and four in the?
Sure. The town's been notified by the State Department of Standards that they no longer will be doing our Sealer and Waits and Measures services because we've been over 5,000 with the 2020 census. So I started to reach out to some other, other entities to see if maybe someone could, some town or whatever could do it for us because in talking with Linda in Health, we can only figure out there might be only one scale in town and certainly no gas stations. So I initially reached out to Cochrane, but interestingly, they actually contract with the State Department of Standards to do that. They pay like $6,500 a year. So I have reached out to them, haven't, haven't heard from them as to what they might, might charge us. I also found out that the Northern Middlesex Council on Governments also does that service. I've reached out to them but have not heard back yet. But we'll be working on it. It should not be that much of a problem, but.
You mean we can't calibrate it against the scale behind you there?
I was going to Barney that. I said, geez, I've spent half my day looking at Waits and Measures and then I look over there and.
What do we have? A scale of transfer station? Where do we have?
Well, I, Linda felt it might be Ferns and their deli.
Oh, that scale?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Why wouldn't Ferns be responsible to calibrate its own stuff?
Because the state, every, everything that's measured and sold and the state requires a sealer. So if you go to the gas station, you'll see a sealer.
Doesn't the provider have, doesn't the owner of the business have to do that?
I think, well, there is a fee. There is a fee that's associated with.
But I mean.
And is it our required?
Yeah, if it's a transfer station, that's ours, right?
Right.
Yeah. Well, I mean, it's kind of consumer protection to make sure this bill.
Given all the stuff Matt's got to deal with, we can pay for this.
Well, I'm just wondering if they sell anything by weight though. I mean, they.
I don't.
They have a deli there. They have a deli there. They'll slice meat.
Not right, not at this moment, but generally yes.
Okay.
And I'm not sure about the farm stand on 225 near Kimball's. I don't know if they, they sell veggies by the pound or whether they have a scale or not. Yeah.
Okay, all right, well.
So was the state providing it for free or subsidized?
Yeah, if you're under 5,000, they, they were doing it, right.
Okay, all right, well, all right.
That's what happens when we grow.
Right.
All right, thank you Steve and thanks for taking action so quickly. Let's just, let's see, do we need, yeah, I guess this is more an announcement. Steve, do you want to describe the expanded solid waste ban?
Right, so DEP has announced that they've done, they've added some items to the solid waste master plan, the 2030 solid waste master plan, including mattresses and textiles that will be part of the list of materials banned for, from disposal or transport in Massachusetts and lowering the threshold on commercial organic and food waste, the facilities generating more than a half a ton of these materials per week. And they'll only take effect November 1st, 2022. So your, your Transfer Station Committee may want to be thinking about this.
Yeah, we already, actually are doing both the mattress and textile recycling, so.
You have to recycle is what they're saying.
Right, right, right.
Right.
Can't put it in the solid waste.
So what is, I mean, this is maybe a little off topic. It's more of a Barney question, but you know, I routinely, and I bite my tongue, it's full of welts, but you know, I routinely see people not recycle what they're supposed to recycle. Like, what's our liability when they don't do that? Like somebody throws a mattress in the, you know, in the solid waste bin and the poor guys at DPW, I get it, they don't want to be cops. So you know, the guy throws his mattress in. I mean, I don't feel like I should be calling that person out. That's not the Carlisle way. So I, you know, bite my tongue, put my head down, like.
Well, I think the, the Transfer Station Action Committee would say that one of their charges is to have people more fully understand what can and cannot be recycled and to do the both education and sort of friendly monitoring, you know, at the transfer station to increase awareness.
I think the signage is going to really help a lot with this. And luckily, I think that they give a warning first, so.
Yeah, yeah, good point Nathan. Okay.
And also too, I mean, the guys at the DPW, you do see them with the hook fishing stuff out quite a bit.
Yeah, they do. No, I feel bad for them, you know, but I mean, let's say in a more, mattress is sort of dramatic, but you know, cardboard in the waste and you know.
Yeah, no, well, that's why.
It's simple stuff that they could do, but they just don't take the ownership. And on the rare occasion, this is a little bending, but when, on a rare occasion when I would say something, I don't believe in that stuff. All goes in the same bin. Like, what am I going to do with that lot?
Oh yeah, no, well, yeah.
I think, I think particularly around Christmas, they will speak up because we, we, we have in the past gotten dinged around cardboard in the in the compactor. And I've been there when they've called people out on it and said, hey, put that in the other one there because, you know, we're not allowed to put that in there. But I think it is, I think it is focused around Christmas because that is when we normally get really dinged for it because everybody's just throwing everything away after Christmas, all their, all their packing boxes.
Right, so anyway, I applaud the Transfer Station Committee and I hope you are able to sway people because we really, it really is, for an affluent community like ours, we should be much better. So do we have time to do the EV charging?
Well, we've got, no, we've only got nine minutes, but why don't we take a quick look though and we may find something later through, through the course of the meeting. Oh, go ahead Steve, sorry.
I just wanted to mention, it wasn't in the report because it's already just happened. We had our, our provider for natural gas, for whatever reason, the town went, the agreement went out of, out of being and we ended up going on the default rate. So the Finance Director just went out to bid for, for natural gas and the default rate was like 0.9 something a therm. We have locked in a rate of 0.82 a therm for two years. And the school's contract will be up in two years. So the thinking is we'll be able to join together and, and maybe get a better, better deal through natural gas in another two years because the school's paying like 0.68 right now.
Yeah, I'm surprised we didn't run that with the school already, but I'm glad to check. It's not rushing gases, is it?
I, well, that's one of the reasons the prices go down.
Russian gas is real cheap right now.
Only if you're paying.
No, he's backed away from that.
Oh, is he?
Um, thank you Steve. Let's take a quick look at the agenda proposed for the 19th. We have a we are going to hear from the Audit Committee and this is our annual FY21 Audit Report presentation. We'll have, I'm sure, information in our packet for that too. We are having the discussion with Sherri Cannon, the Director of Timber Nook. And while I'm on that, just a reminder that it's tomorrow at 3:30 for those of us that can make it to the site visit with Sherri Cannon, you know, meeting at the bottom of the parking lot here. And I do think some of the abutters are going to show up as well. We will get an update. So with the, with the deadline of this Friday for the resumes to be in for the town administrator, John Petron will be here to update us and the hope would be that that screening committee has had its first meeting by then. Final town meeting preparations, we have the CPA Committee recommendations there Luke, unless you want to say something more on that tonight.
Yeah, I can say it during, because I'm not at the meeting on the 19th.
That's right. So maybe during liaison time? Yeah, okay, thanks. Town Administrator's Report, the rest of the standard things. And I'll just point out that the Finance Committee meeting is this coming Monday and the court, right here at 7 o'clock.
Hearing, that, sorry, their hearing, their budget hearing, sorry. Yeah, their standard budget hearing in advance of town meeting to review that with.
You know, hot ticket, you should make sure you get your ticket now because.
Right, it'll be full. Yeah, okay.
In all my years, we had like two people.
Yeah, well, we don't have many people at this meeting either, but I would like, I was going to say, I'd like to encourage anybody who is on this meeting to come to those hearings. They are interesting and important and they do have a bearing on our, all of our tax rates.
Yes, absolutely. All right, good. We do have five more minutes before the hearing is scheduled to begin. So I'm going to wait till five, for five minutes because we're required to do that by state statute. And in the meantime, let's see what we have here. Do the what?
Charging station.
No, that's going to take more than five minutes.
David, you keep trying. As we have less and less time.
So the DPW, they have three old trucks that basically they've been using for parts and they want to get rid of. So I think typically, they have no value, right? So they want to scrap them. Typically, we declare those a surplus, right?
Statutorily, yeah.
Right, so, but we have to declare that, right?
Yes.
So.
The same way we do with the computers.
Yeah, exactly, right? So is that, does that have to be written up or is that something we could kind of boat on tonight?
I think we have to be specific as to what the, what it is.
Okay, all right. I can follow up with Chris and get the information on it. Okay.
All right, so maybe that's something to note though for that meeting on the 19th.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
It's simple enough, okay.
Yeah.
I'll get that info from Chris.
Okay, great. Are there any other liaison reports that somebody has to make that take less than three or four minutes?
Well, we could do the warrants.
Oh, that's a good idea. Yeah, take a look at the warrants there. We don't.
Downbills.
Right near the end of your packet. There's a summary on, if you're looking at your packet, it's page 58. This is something that Kelly's been providing for the last couple of meetings, which I think is very helpful. The, the kind of the highlights of the expense warrants that I approved last week before she went on vacation.
Is the health dental, what, over what period does that cover? The MIA health?
I don't recall, but it's, it's, it might be quarterly. I could be wrong though. I don't know David.
Do we have an insurance committee?
We do, but it hasn't had a meeting for quite some time.
We really, we probably, who's on the insurance committee?
I was, I was point of the, the last time, but nobody is, you know.
I mean.
And Kim has been, this is a committee that she was putting together, am I right? Kim Kane?
Well, statutory is supposed to be an insurance advisory committee that tends to have employees on it because.
It has a lot of employees, yes. Teachers as well, so.
Do we appoint people to that at the beginning of the year?
I don't, yeah, I, I think we did because I think I got appointed to it for this year, our representative anyway. But nothing, you know, we haven't, since I'm not.
We really should meet. I mean, insurance is pretty important. We talked to Steve the other day about risk management. You know, insurance is a key piece of that, so.
So.
I would encourage us. I'd be happy, I'd be happy to serve if.
Copious list.
Well, why don't we, well, let's, we can, we can go back and look too to see what we did in January in terms of approving or February, whenever we did that, we can go find that.
I think it was like last summer.
Oh, you do, okay, well.
Yeah.
We can figure that out.
Nothing has happened since we voted the increase in the last year, percentage last year. And I don't think the.
Going to 55%.
Has met since.
Right, so.
But the committee should also have representative of each union and a retiree as well.
It, it does. It's how it's constituted.
But we just.
But.
Is there a FinCom member on?
It hasn't been driven by anybody, right.
Kate, is a FinCom member on?
There's a FinCom, yes. And I know Linda Venaria's on it and then, you know, Steve Mack and, yeah, all the.
Okay, so that's a, to be followed up on.
And it may be because the unions have been a little busy negotiating too, so I don't know.
Yeah.
I'll just say that it is on the website. It's Kimberly Kane, Tim Goddard, Steve Mack, Kirk Bishop, Linda Venaria, Jennifer Pike, Anusha Coats, Chris Sireen, Nancy Harvey, James Dar, and Kate Reed.
Okay. Yeah, but I would imagine that TA is the one that should be the, the, either, either you or Kim should be the one that's the mover and the shaker on this thing.
Tim could be the retiring now on the committee.
That's right.
Yes.
Well, he's on the committee, so he can't retire.
He could be the retiree on the committee because there's supposed to be a retiree.
Yeah, we don't have one of those.
Yeah, yeah, he seems to be better. All right, well, thanks. We, that's another thing to add to the list. And it is now 7:30, so that's good timing. We'll go back to that part of our agenda, which is the dog hearing this evening. And I want to pull up my notes on that. So I see we have here Jean Delano and also Matt Svatek. Thank you very much, who are our animal control officers here in Carlisle.
Interrupt for just one second. Is this a public hearing that we need to open?
We do, but I was just going to introduce who's here. I'll do.
Okay.
The meeting, yeah, shortly. And then. Meeting, yeah, shortly, um, and then uh. Um. Sorry, is this, are you Ronnie and Steve? So Steve Moreau and Ronnie Green? Yeah, hi, welcome, so you, they're the ones that filed the complaint. And then I believe Jenny Merrill, are you on the phone on the Zoom? Great, there she is, who's our town council. And uh, I, I don't see any representation from the dog owners at this point, is there anybody on the, on the Zoom call? I don't see them, okay. So um, we're gonna officially open the um hearing, uh, and I would like a motion to that effect, please.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, uh, let's do a roll call vote, please, Arnold, I.
Oscar, all right.
Brown, I.
What about I?
Rita.
Rita, thank you, so this is a hearing of the select board. Held pursuant to general laws, chapter one forty, uh, section one fifty-seven. Uh, paragraph one fifty-seven and section fourteen point six point seven of the town's general bylaws. For the purpose of determining whether the dog, and now we do not have a name uh so far, does anyone know the name of the dog or dogs in question? Okay. But the dog uh at, dog or dogs at forty Laurelwood Drive, Carlisle, Mass, oh one seven four one. Um, is to determine whether the dog is a nuisance dog and determine the appropriate remedial action to be taken. So I just wanna briefly explain the process that we're gonna go through, so. The select board is acting as the hearing authority and tonight, we're gonna hear from various parties that are involved in the complaint. Everyone who wishes to offer testimony will have a chance to do so. During the hearing, the chair must recognize anyone who wishes to speak and during testimony, no one else is allowed to interrupt or otherwise disrupt, disrupt the speaker. I will invite members of the board to ask questions of anyone offering testimony or others offering comments. Um, we also have our town council, Jenny Merrill, uh, to guide us during the hearing if needed. Once all the testimony and the comment has been received by the board, I'll take a motion to close the hearing. Then the board, as the hearing authority, will deliberate based on the evidence we've received and the testimony that's been given. This deliberation is for the members of the board only. Um, as a reminder to the board, this is a nuisance hearing. Um. And it's not a dangerous dog hearing, which is what, you know, has come before us previously, so as we're listening to the testimony. What we need to be thinking about is um. Whether we will determine that this dog meets the criteria to be determined a nuisance or not. And if it does not meet the criteria, we then dismiss the complaint. If it does meet the criteria, then we deliberate and determine the remedies that we're going to apply. So, unless someone has a procedural question about any of that, I'm gonna go ahead and proceed. You good? Okay. Um, so um, the first thing I need to do as the um hearing authority is to swear in anyone that's gonna be offering testimony. And this is just the formal way that the state requires us to do this. Um, but we're, we're a friendly body, we definitely wanna try to figure out a good solution to this, so um. Uh, don't be concerned about the formality, so first of all, that means Ronnie Green and Steve Moreau, if you wouldn't mind standing up. And raising your right hand, um, and then repeating after me, I, and then you say your names. Do solemnly swear that the testimony I'm about to give. Is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. Thank you, and you can have a seat for a minute. Uh, and then I also need to swear in the other individuals that um will be offering testimony, so. Um, Matt, will you be offering testimony? Okay, if you would stand, uh, and then, hold on one second, because I can do all of you together, I'm allowed to do that. So Jean, are you gonna be offering testimony? Okay, if you could please stand. Um, and the dog owners are, are you?
Just an interested party.
An interested party, are you thinking you will offer testimony?
I have no testimony to do.
Okay, anyone else interested in offering any kind of testimony or comments? Because if you are on the Zoom call. You can stand and do this from home. Um, so what I'll do is I'll say I and then you put your own name in there and then I will have you repeat after me the rest of the um swearing in language, so I. Do solemnly swear that the testimony I'm about to give is the, about to give. Is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. Thank you very much.
Jonathan has his hand up.
Excuse me?
Jonathan has his hand up.
Oh, Jonathan DeCock?
Yes.
Hi, Jonathan, uh, did you wanna be sworn in or did you have a, a, something different?
Yeah, no, you can, I, I, I live in the neighborhood, so I'm willing to offer some commentary as well, so if you wanna swear in, that'd be fine.
All right, uh, so say after me, please, I.
I. Jonathan DeCock.
Do solemnly swear that the testimony I'm about to give.
Do solemnly swear the testimony I'm about to give.
Is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you, so first, um, I'm gonna call on those that filed the complaint, which is Ronnie Green and Steve Moreau. Um, would you like to come up to the podium so that we can hear you? Yes, please.
So the Zoom, it's so the Zoomies can hear you.
You know what, if you'd rather pull up a chair, we have, you can sit at a chair, but we, we do want you to speak into a, a mic so that everyone can hear you.
Doesn't have to be that formal, but they have to hear you.
Yeah.
Come on up. Yeah, just bring your chair if you like.
Yeah.
And we have in our packets, just to remind everybody that we have their um written uh complaint to us in our packets.
So are you gonna be a character witness or?
Thank you, um, and really, no need to be nervous, we just wanna hear what your experience has been.
Hello, everybody? Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Um, so does everyone have a copy of my complaint?
Yep.
Yes, we do. Um, so that I wrote actually on the complaint that this is, this has been an ongoing problem since mid-November and I went back to my notes and it's actually been an ongoing problem since October. Um, which is a pretty long time. Um, and basically, the dogs, there are two dogs at forty Laurelwood. They um bark incessantly from first thing in the morning throughout the day, sometimes throughout the night. They have a doggy door through which they come and go uh with no um intervention by any human being, so. Um, no one has to get up to walk them, let them in or out, and they just have free rein and they bark at absolutely everything. I have called um the police and spoken with the dog officers on multiple occasions. Um, we only call if the barking has continued unabated for three to four hours minimum. I mean, and this is just incessant without the dogs even taking a breath. So as I said, we've only called when it's gotten to the point where it's been going on for three, four, seven, eight hours. Um, and it's just driving us crazy. We cannot, we're on Milne Cove Road and the dogs are on Laurelwood, but their property sort of backs up onto ours. When the dogs are barking, we cannot hear the television in our own home. No matter how much we turn up the volume, um, with all the doors and windows closed, we literally can't hear, we have been driven. Out of the home on numerous occasions because of the barking and that's just not right, we've lived here since two thousand four and actually Steve's since nineteen ninety-eight or nineteen ninety-nine. And we, we're surrounded by dogs, um, there are plenty on Laurelwood and also we're on the pond on Milne Cove, there are several across the pond as well. They all bark, it's not an issue because it's relatively controlled. Um, it's just, these dogs are, are incessant and they're very aggressive as well when I, I don't walk down my driveway anymore because they charge at me. Um, and they don't. They must have an invisible fence or something because they've never crossed that. Um, but they still come running toward me barking very aggressively and it's just not a pleasant experience, so I drive down to get the mail instead of walking to get them. Um, so that's. Basically what our experience has been since October. We love it here, we don't like to make um trouble for anybody. And we were asked in the beginning, when all of this first occurred, if we. Uh, would allow time for the dog owners to do whatever training was necessary or to make arrangements for the care of the dogs, walking, anything like that. We gladly agreed, um, but it just does not appear uh as if any of that has happened. Um, I, I would like to make one sort of correction to my own statement here. In the last week to ten days, it has been significantly better. So I don't know, I know Jean, you had a conversation with them relatively recently with the dog owners, so I don't know if it is a result of Jean's conversation, but in the past week to ten days. Um, it's been, it's been almost fine. Um, so if it stays like it has been in the last week to ten days, we would, we would be fine.
Right. And if I could just add, early on, when we were getting really frustrated, we tried to contact the people who lived there. And they wouldn't answer their phone, they wouldn't come to the door, we could see them in the house, they wouldn't answer the door, so.
And we have been told by the um dog officers that they have been rather um unresponsive to the dog officers as well.
Okay, so. Anyone here have a question?
I have a couple, so um, to your understanding, did the, did the dogs arrive mid-October or were the dogs there before and something changed?
I believe, and I, I don't know this to be accurate, but my understanding is that one dog was already there and a new one arrived in October.
And do you have any idea size or breed?
I, I, again, uh, this, these are better directed to the animal control officers, but um, I, there are some German Shepherd. Um, it, they're either German Shepherds or a German Shepherd mix. Um, they're both big. Um, they do have no bark collars on them, but they haven't done a thing.
And you don't ever observe the owners actually walking them or interacting with them socially?
Never.
We saw them once, a couple of days ago.
Yeah.
The, the male of the couple was in the backyard and the dog was just sitting there hanging out. And we were in the driveway.
Usually it's right, it's usually lack of attention and, you know, lack of stimulation.
Right, they, you know, the dogs are out um by themselves all day long, we've never, we know all the dog walkers in the neighborhood.
You have any idea from the pattern, I mean, are these people who leave the house all day to work or whatever and come back or you don't?
Unknown.
I mean, you don't see cars in the driveway or there's no.
Not, we, they had, currently had a big party a couple of days ago, but other than that, no.
You can't tell.
Well. We, there are lots of times when there's no lights on in the house. From, from our perspective, which we're not like right there, but.
Okay, thank you.
Outdoor lights are on all the time.
Outdoor lights are on.
All the time. I didn't, to me.
You can't?
Okay. So. So one other thing I'd like to add.
Draw the question about breed.
Oh, okay. Um, one other thing I'd like to add, I, to my mind, we did read the appropriate um statutes and laws. And to my mind, these dogs are the very definition of nuisance dogs. They, well, we're reasonable people and if it would be.
I'm a dog lover.
I mean, we're both dog lovers and as I said, we have no issue with any of the other dogs in the neighborhood and, and um have never had. But we are reasonable people and this is just disturbing to the two of us and also um, it says in the. General laws that if there's an ill person um residing in the area that's disturbed, I also qualify as an ill person. Um, which I'm happy to get into the details of that if anyone wants to know about it or not. Um, but I, to, to both of us, um, these dogs are one in particular, I think the new one is the very definition of a nuisance dog. I do have some recordings on my phone, if anyone has any interest in hearing what it sounds like. And you'll understand, I, we've been driven so crazy.
Yeah, um, let's hold off on that just for a few minutes. Um, anyone else on the board have a question?
No, I, so the bylaw, I think the by, well, necessarily, I think the bylaw is fifteen minutes, right? Not anymore? Oh, okay, when did that change?
Uh, last round of updating the dog.
Oh, okay, yeah. Yeah, all right. It was on there. I should know that one, yeah. But no, I, three and four and eight hours, I mean, yeah, no, I, I kinda echo what, what Dave says, it seems like, yeah, they must leave.
I feel sorry for the dogs, actually.
I do too, we do too. We do too, I mean, and they sound, they're, they're barking, they sound distressed, they don't, you know, it's not happy barks, they sound distressed.
So when the, when the dogs are inside, right, is, is it muffled, is it less, I mean, or is it, is it? Or, is it only when they're out or is it when they're in?
No, when they're in. When they're in, if they see something outside through the window of the house, they come running out.
Or they come out.
Or, or they'll just stand at the, a couple of times, they've just stood at the door and barked and we can still hear them in our house.
Yeah.
But it's, it's not as bad when they're inside, but it, it, it's not evident that the doggy door um is ever closed.
Yeah.
Um, you know, like at eleven o'clock at night maybe, close it until seven in the morning or something, it's not evident that, that, that has occurred.
Yeah, no, the reason I ask is because we have to try to think of remedies, right? And obviously, you know, we're new to this too, right? But if, you know, keeping the dogs inside would be, you know, getting rid of the doggy door, that sort of thing would be a, you know, at least a partial fix, you know, that's one of the things that we could, we could implement, so that's why, yeah.
Yeah.
And, and as Colin said, it's been better recently, so maybe they've already done some of that and we're not aware of it.
Yeah, yeah, or maybe words gotten out that there's gonna be a hearing.
Right.
They did receive, they did um send a return receipt.
They did.
They had received the notice of the hearing, yeah, that's in our packet.
I, I, one, one.
I could have sworn that dog barking was either part of our noise control or our, our, our animal control by law, but I guess we're just following on, mastering a law at this point.
Right. That's correct, I think.
One final thing, um, you know how the process when uh we call in is to call the police and then the police get in touch with the animal control officers and then the animal control officers get in touch with us. Um, one of the most recent calls I had with Jean, uh, he called me about an uh half, a half hour, an hour after I had called into the police. And he was on the road and we were on the phone for a little over twenty-seven minutes, according to him in the car. And the dog, he had called me on our landline at home. And the dogs were barking the entirety of the conversation and he could hear it the entirety of the conversation and I. Think that's one of the things that he's here to um attest to today, but.
We, we hope so anyway.
Yeah, we hope so.
All right, well, thank you. That's all that's required of you at this point, so uh, yeah, that wasn't so bad, was it?
I'm, I'm not a good public speaker.
Yeah, you did well, thank you, yeah, feel free to go back.
Roll back?
Yeah, yeah, so, that's right, roll back.
So no recordings, no?
Let's, let's see if we get to that point. Um, but, well, we know that you have it, which is good and I will, I will note that.
And, and I do have logs.
Uh huh.
Just of, just notes I took of the days and times, I didn't start this until late December, a couple months in. Um, days and times and when I called and when I didn't and.
You know, you can submit that as evidence too, right now, yeah, you can give that to us if you're comfortable submitting that and we can include that in our.
I'll read it over before.
Okay, okay. All right. That's right, right, okay.
Is our, is our, is our intention to like close this tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
There's some.
So then, so then those, those notes don't really matter?
I think he's right.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, don't, don't worry about looking through them, if you're not submitting them tonight, don't worry about looking through them.
Yeah. Um, so uh, Matt or Jean, uh, which one of you would like to come first to offer your testimony?
I'll start first because I'm, um, I think on the beginning end of it, right, and then Jean's been kinda lately.
Do you wanna just take that over? Standing, okay, thanks, this is Matt Svatek, our, one of our animal control officers. Standing? Okay, thanks. This is Matt Svattek, our, one of our animal control officers.
So we received many calls from them. I think we have at least a dozen documented of us going there. There are many more calls than that where they're just phone calls. Dogs were definitely barking in the background every time they called. They called for reasons because the dogs are barking. So what's, what's gonna have to happen tonight is you guys are gonna have to determine what the threshold for nuisance is and, and how long the barking goes on or what kind of barking it is or whatever. I don't think there's any argument that the dog's barking. We've also received conversations, not documentation, from other members of the neighborhood who also say, oh yeah, that dog barks all the time or those dogs bark all the time. We did have some conversations finally after, I want to guess a month. Unfortunately, I don't have my log in front of me, but after a month of trying to get in touch with the homeowners, every time we got called, we went down there and there was nobody home. And if they were home, like they experienced, they weren't answering the door for us. The doggy door is built into the slider on the rear deck so the dogs can just come and go. There were times that I was able to get them back into the house and shut the, shut the door so they couldn't come back out, but, you know, not knowing when they're coming home or if they're coming home, that's not really a fair thing to the dogs either. So, so that wasn't done often. At times I would sit up the street or down the street from their house and, and wait before approaching the house to see if it's a constant thing or if it's just when, say, people are going by. I think it probably depends on the weather or the way the sun's shining or something because there were times where I'd sit there and they'd be quiet and then a car would drive by and they'd bark. And one Saturday, I think I was there for close to an hour and somebody must have been having a party on the street because it was like just car after car after car. And yeah, they were barking at everything that went by, every squirrel they saw, every, everything. So I definitely see how that can be disruptive. There, I think, what did we decide? There were one and five years old, Athena and Apollo. The story the owners told us was they had an older German Shepherd that passed and the newer one was to, you know, not replace, but whatever you call it, get another one. And that's the one that kind of spurs on the, the barking sprees, if you will, the younger one. So I know that they've tried things. They've said they've tried training. I don't have any evidence of that. I didn't ask for a receipt or anything, but they said they've tried training. I know they've seen, tried no bark collars because one of the times that I got called down there, the Amazon package was torn apart and there were pieces of collars littered all over the lawn. So they had to actually order another set of.
Dogs referendum on the collar.
Yeah. Yeah. Dogs payback. They actually had to order another set of collars and, and I've seen them on the dogs. They're long-haired dogs. They might have short prongs. They don't necessarily work all the time. I don't know what brand or model. I'm not going to speak to that. But the point is that they don't work all the time. So it's not that they're not trying to do things. I think maybe they're not effective. Their methods aren't effective enough. I don't know what you've said to them in the last week to, to make it better. But whatever the case, I think a more effective method of barking control needs to be done.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, Jean?
So I'll, uh, Jean Delano, hi Ronnie. So I do, I will testify to the barking dog on the phone for, for 27 minutes during a call and I've been over to this address myself a number of times, both because of the call and to follow up on the previous call because as Matt mentioned and Ronnie mentioned, there's usually, there's no response at the door. The owners licensed the animals earlier this year and the, the, their information was, was passed to me from Peggy Wang, the dogs' names and their ages and, and also contact information. And again, I left messages that were not responded to. I did speak to one of the owners about a month ago, I think, a month and a half ago, after another call. And I stress that, in my opinion, the free access to, to the outdoors is the problem and that they need to take measurable steps to mitigate this problem because it's, it's, it's not getting better. The bark collars, I don't think work if they're being used. I, I don't know what the problem is, but mostly my, my opinion is, is access to the outdoors. I am a dog owner. I am a reactive dog as well. My dog isn't allowed to bark more than 15 minutes because I remember the old law. I don't have neighbors, but I certainly, if I had neighbors, I, I would, I would take further steps to make sure that they're not disturbed. There are, according to the police log, there were 14 incidents logged between October 22nd of 2021 through March 26th of this year. And that doesn't.
What'd you say, 27? Oh, 14.
From 10/22/21 to 3/28/22, 14 incidents. And that doesn't count Matt sitting there on surveillance. That doesn't count me stopping by and speaking to a neighbor who, who didn't give testimony tonight. So I don't know if I can say what she said, but, but it, it, it's an ongoing neighborhood issue and more so for Ronnie and Steve because of where their house is positioned. And again, free access to the outdoors. So you have any questions for me? Okay.
Thank you, Jean.
Jean, I have one question. I'm sorry. Any other parties registering complaints, other neighbors?
Can I tell you? It's, or is it hearsay?
No, I mean, through the police, not.
Oh, not to my knowledge, no.
Thank you.
Steve, did you want to come back and make a comment? Can you come up to the mic? Sorry, just that's so everybody can hear.
Just one clarification. I have no idea whether it's relevant or not, but the, these people aren't the owners of the house. They're renters of the house.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Jonathan, you had indicated you would like to offer some testimony or comment?
Sure. Um, so Jonathan DeCock, 130 Oak Knoll Road. I live about a mile actually from this property, but it's the only way in and out of the neighborhood for about the 40 houses that live here. And there are sidewalks that immediately abut the property and there's a wooden fence and I presume an invisible fence that keeps the dogs constrained. But the fence is right on the sidewalk. I mean, like within six inches. And the dogs do bark from the time that they see you on the sidewalk, certainly, until long after your pass beyond their seeing. And that's a good 500 feet from the people's house in either side. So I would say there's a, a range of a quarter mile where your, the dogs are barking when you walk past. And a lot of the people in, in the neighborhood walk on these sidewalks. It's not an uncommon thing. Also, the bus stop for the entire neighborhood is right at the base of the hill and the children have to walk past these dogs. And I have noted on a number of occasions that the children explicitly go out of their way to leave the sidewalk, cross the road and walk on the road to avoid being close to these dogs because they not only are barking, they sound very aggressive. And, and because the sidewalk is so close to them, it's, I can imagine being a young child, it's certainly terrifying. I know when I walk my dog, I do the same thing. My dog is afraid of the, the noise that they're making and so we walk on their other side of the street to get past. So I would say that, you know, in my experience, I don't hear them from my house, but my house is a mile away. However, every time I walk by, the dog is barking continuously while I am within range of hearing it. And so it is definitely a problem and, and it's not a soft bark. It is so loud that if you're walking with someone else, you cannot have a conversation as you're passing the house. So I think that's, that's all I would like to, to say at this time.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else that wanted to offer any comments? All right. Well, hearing none. What I'd like to do is take a motion to close the hearing, please, and then we will deliberate after that.
I move to close.
I just want to verify that nobody from the dog owner has shown up at all?
Correct.
That's correct.
Okay.
I move to close the hearing.
Second.
Like a roll call vote, please. Arnold, I.
Oscar, Lula, I.
Brown, I.
O'Dell, I.
Reed, I.
All right. Thank you. The hearing is closed. So I just want to very quickly summarize that in our packets, we have the formal letter of complaint from the, the, from Ronnie Green and Steve Moreau. And we have heard testimony from those two individuals plus our two animal control officers and Jonathan DeCock. I want to, before we start deliberating, just remind us that the definition of a nuisance dog has three different categories. One is you declare them a nuisance dog if there is excessive barking or other disturbance and it's a source of annoyance to a sick person residing in the vicinity or by excessive barking causing damage or other interference, a reasonable person would find such behavior disruptive to one's quiet and peaceful enjoyment. Or number three, which I don't believe is relevant here, which is has threatened or attacked livestock, a domestic animal or a person, but such threat or attack was not a grossly disproportionate reaction under all the circumstances. Although may, I may be wrong about saying that, given that the dog run at people even though they stop at the, at the fence or the invisible fence. But those are the three definitions. So I'm gonna open it to select board members to comment and start our deliberations. Yeah.
I just have a, if I, I'm sorry.
What'd you say, Nathan?
It, it, may I speak?
Yes, please.
Sorry, it's, it's hard being remote. It, I, I just thought all of a sudden I was interrupting. I just have a question for Jenny and in your examples, Jenny, it was always kind of like 9:00 PM to 7:00 AM or something like that. Do, do we have to limit it to those times or were those purely examples? So this seems like a 24-hour issue.
Yeah, those are just some ideas for you.
Okay.
You, there's a lot more flexibility here than there is with a dangerous dog hearing.
Okay, that's good.
I, I don't think there's any question that this is a nuisance dog, either under one or two. And having had a similar experience with a former neighbor, I know how frantic it can make you feel and how disturbing it is. So why don't we get that out of the way first?
Yeah.
And then we can talk about the.
Remedies.
Remedies.
Yeah. Does anyone here on the board disagree? All right. Well, then let's do a quick vote on that.
I'm sorry, what are we voting on? That it's?
We are moving to, I move to declare this dog, uh, these dogs, nuisance dogs.
As defined by?
As defined by Mass General Law, Chapter 140, Section 136A.
Because of their barking.
Under Items 1 and 2 on the, in the, in the chapter.
Second.
Any more discussion on that? All right. I'd like a roll call vote, please. Arnold, I.
Oscar, Lula, I.
Brown, I.
O'Dell, I.
Reed, I. All right. So now we need to look at the remedies and the, you know, as the hearing authority, we can determine what we want to order that the dog owners do in order to take remedial action. And some of the examples we've got here are restricting the time that the dog might be outdoors unattended or when they're outside and when they're outside that they must be on a leash. Proof of training within a certain number of days of receiving the order from us. And there are specifics about how they would verify that. A barking collar, which we've heard, does not seem to have been effective so far. There could be something around what they, how they have to maintain their home, keep the windows closed, keep the dog door closed at certain times. And there may be others that we come up with, but let's discuss how we, yeah, what, what remedies we want to order.
So I have a reasonable amount of experience with dog training and as people know who've been in these hearings, that dog training is owner training, first of all, right? And, and it does appear to me that this, this is an issue of neglect by the owners from the, at least from what I've heard. And that's, as I said earlier, it's too bad for the dogs that the owners don't care enough to, you know, take care of them. But any remedial training of dogs requires the cooperation of both the owners. The owners have to commit to the training and the dog training process is a multi-month process. Simply ordering dog collars or whatever level of training they may have gone through is insufficient if there's not a commitment to stick to it. And, and it works. I know it works and, and I know dog trainers personally who are very good at it. But, you know, so I, I, I'm okay with providing remedies that are, you know, humane and will solve the problem, but don't mean containing the dog, which is another sort of form of abuse. But before we embark on that, I just want to make that comment that it requires commitment by the owner. The fact that the owners did not even care enough to show up today and don't answer the phone or come by or are there tells me that they're, they're not committed to a solution. So I, I just want us to be kind of eyes wide open on that aspect. And, and I find it very, you know, in some ways, I have to say, I find it more disturbing what I'm hearing today than a previous hearing we had where the owners clearly loved the dog, just couldn't control the dog.
Right.
They came, they argued very emotionally about taking care of the dog. We had a heated emotion about whether, you know, we could confine the dog or not. You know, I mean, they, I don't know how it's resolved itself, but they loved that dog. These people, I don't think they love their dogs. I don't know what they are. So it's very disappointing to me and I'm, I'm kind of at odds of what really to prescribe that's practical. Thank you.
Steve?
I, I just wonder, excuse me, I just wonder if the animal control officers had any recommendations?
Jean, you come on up if you, yeah.
I'll, I'll state again, I, I think, I think limiting their access to the outdoors is, is really the only thing that's going to help here. I don't think our collars are working. It may be an issue that they're not home during the day. There are dog walkers to take care of, of that problem. It, it clearly is an access issue. They go outside, become stimulated, become agitated and the male has very loud, a very loud bark. So it's access, in my opinion, so.
So if we were to restrict the time that the dogs could be outdoors?
I don't think it should be, that they should be restricted from going outdoors. I think they should be restricted from going outdoors without supervision.
Right.
Yeah.
Unattended.
Right.
So I think it would, it's very easy. They may not go outdoors unattended. Period.
And let them figure out how to do that.
Let them figure out how to do that.
I have, I have another question for, for Jenny. I'm sorry to keep putting you on the spot, Jenny. So if we, if we prescribe something like, you know, can't be outside unattended, but what we prescribe does not solve the noise problem, then what do we, you know, can, do we open the hearing again or, or what do we do at that point?
You can have another hearing, you know, you have another complaint, have another hearing. I mean, that, and it would, you would also have to find out, you know, if they're actually following your orders. So if you wish to order and really what you're finding out is the dogs are going out unattended, then that's more of a compliance with your order issue.
Right.
And take remedies under the bylaw that way. But.
What are the, Jean, what are those remedies? Non-compliance remedies are what?
Oh, you know, we've, we've been, we've dealt, we've dealt with that a little bit. It's, it's really the same for your dangerous dog order. You can, you can find them, you can, you know, there's remedies provided by statute and.
And one of them includes not being able to keep a dog in the state, have the ability to license a dog in the state for five years. Is that right?
There, there is a step, yeah, that, that could involve that, yes. But as we've learned, the remedies are, they're not perfect, but they, you know, they do exist. It involves ticketing and then going to court and hopefully having somebody show up to court.
Yeah.
So could we, could we say something like, you know, like, you know, the dog cannot be allowed? Can we say something like, you know, like, you know, the dog cannot be allowed outside unattended until they can demonstrate that the noise nuisance has been addressed?
Yeah, I mean, what you can order is very flexible under this part of the statute. So I don't know, you know, that enforcing that might be more difficult. But you could certainly order it.
What, what is the liability of the property owner, since this is a rented property?
That, that's good. They're not really, the liability falls on the owner of the dog.
We can't. We can't.
That would be an interesting question if we have, if somebody gets injured on their property from the dogs, you know, that would probably be something that, you know, they'd look for that property insurance to cover. But that's not really what we're talking about here.
Yeah, no, yeah. I was just thinking that, you know, if they were notified that their tenant has, no?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, the statute really applies to owners and keepers of dogs. And I don't think that the landlord in this situation would meet the criteria of keeper of a dog.
So what I'm hearing is we could issue a determination that the dog, the dogs would not be allowed to be outdoors unattended. And then it would be up to some entity that we would, some individuals to go monitor that. Right? I mean, because
I mean, if they're going to complain.
Want to put it on the neighbors to have to do that, so.
But if it results in barking, I presume you'll complain again, and ACO will come out, and if the people are away, as it seems, for many hours, it should be relatively easy to establish dogs loose and unattended, right? That should be pretty simple. I don't think we need to put it on anybody else than ACO.
Well, I just meant, I don't know, Jenny, what's your feeling about that? If that's what our order was, that we just leave it to the neighbors to report if it's being complied with?
I mean, you're, you're right that that's unfair, but, but also it's most likely they're going to be the ones that notice that it's not going to be complied with, you know.
Yeah.
They're all the time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I guess what I worry about is, like, if we're going to say that the dogs cannot be left outside unattended, you know, if that's our order, I think it should also be, and whatever other methods are, you know, so in addition to that, what other, other methods they may use in order to reduce the noise? Because, I mean, I've been by, you know, there are times when I'm sure that people walk by my house and it sounds like, you know, my dog's just going to rip them apart. So I'm not sure that it's necessarily just the dogs in, you know, in the yard that's a problem. It's the barking that's a problem. And so, you know, I think certainly a really good way, you know, from what Jean is saying, is don't let them outside, but also, and any other means they can find to ensure that the dog is not a barking nuisance. Just to make sure that we're not restricting, if they do that, and then everybody's still complaining because the dog is barking inside, we still have the problem.
Yeah. And we, I mean, we could also, you know, as David, you're saying, we could, we could ask that they
We could certainly recommend that, yeah.
Dog training. And the, you know, what the statute describes is very specific certified trainers that have to be used.
Yeah, if we do that, I would say 90 days. Give it, give them 90 days because they're not going to train them overnight.
Even 90 is short, but
But at least
The officer has it.
Yes, Matt.
I have a fear that, I think both David and Nathan touched on, with owners that are acting in the way they are, where they don't seem to care about it, their solution is going to be, potentially, would be just to lock them in the house. And that's not fair to the animals. So I think unfortunately, you need to consider what's fair to them also. So I think, I think it was Nathan that mentioned the open-ended confinement of the house without, without somebody supervising until they can demonstrate that they've trained. So I think the two-for approach, the two-pronged approach, or some other way that they can keep the barking under control.
Right.
You know, surgically removing their vocal cords. I don't think that's a good way of doing it. But training or, you know, prove, demonstrate that they've got some other way to stop the barking.
Yeah.
And then they can go back to the free rein. I mean, you know, if I was a dog, I would love to be coming in and out all the time at will, right? That seems like the best life. But when you're bothering people to the point where they're bothering them, it's just
You can't allow that as the owner, right?
Well, they're not, I mean, I don't want to be a dog psychologist, but it would seem to me they're, they're not getting enough stimulation, because even though they can go out, they can't interact with whatever's out there. And they're not getting, I presume, human interaction, so they don't get the adjustment, basically, that dogs are social animals. They need interaction with humans. That's been, you know, 100,000 years of that. So they're not getting it, which is why they express it through barking. And that's why training takes a long time. It's not, you know.
So
I agree with Matt, that, you know, I do worry about it being kind of like a never-ending thing if we, if we put this on there. So, you know, having them to some way of demonstrating that they now have the dog in a place where it's not going to bark. With the dogs, I think if they can come back and demonstrate that, and the neighbors can, you know, you know, we can put them on notice and we can say, okay, we're going to let it out for a little while, and you let us know how it goes. And if it goes bad again, then they're back where they were. But at least they have an opportunity to not keep the dog locked up all the time.
Right. I'm supportive of that. How are you feeling, Luke?
Yeah, no, I am. I mean, I have a long, I have a shepherd, right? And you put the zap collar on and hit that thing, jack, no, because it's not getting through the hair. I mean, a lot of it could just be that they're not actually attentively putting the collar on and everything. So, yeah, I, I mean, I'm definitely supportive of, of, you know, until they can show. But, yeah, I mean, we definitely have to be cognizant of what the neighbors are going through.
Right.
And, you know, and then the other piece too is Jonathan brought up with the school. You know, I, maybe we should, you know, confine them for a certain period, you know, just so.
Yeah, at certain hours of the day, you mean, when the bus stops?
Yeah.
When kids are getting off and on the bus?
Yeah. But, but I don't know. I mean, ultimately, if they're not barking, is it going to be an issue, right? So, like, that's the thing. I think you solve the barking, you probably solve some of the other issues. But, yeah, no, I agree with, you know, I, yeah, I think close them in until you can show that they can effectively be outside.
Without barking.
Barking, right? Because, I mean, were they, I'm sorry, not to jump back to a question. Well, you said the owner was out with the dog a couple of weeks ago, or last week or something. Was the dog barking? You know, like, is the No, right. So the dog, so
The dog just sat there, looked at us, didn't move, didn't bark, didn't do anything.
Yeah, so I mean, it's a good situation, right? Yeah, right, yeah. So so, yeah, I mean, hopefully they'll want to comply, right? But, yeah, I mean, I think it's the, yeah, the free rein piece, you know, without the supervision is
So what I'm hearing is that we, we have an order that stipulates the dogs must be, may not go outside unattended for a period of time, and we can determine what that is, or we can say, until they have demonstrated, the owners have demonstrated that the dogs are not going to bark when they go outside. Is that a fair statement, Nathan?
Yeah, I, I think, yeah, I would say not for a period of time. I mean, that, that period of time
That out and just say
Until they can demonstrate.
They have demonstrated that the dogs are not barking when they go outside.
And I would agree with Luke, that, you know, during the school year, you know, during this hour and this hour, they, they cannot be allowed out. Well, I mean, there, no, I don't know, because, I mean, if they're not out, if they're not allowed, that's not English. If they are not allowed outside unattended, the chances are they're not going to be barking at the kids as they walk by, right?
Right, well, they may bark on the inside, but
Well, that's
That's an experiment, right? Whether it's, I think it's an experiment you haven't done because the dogs probably mostly run out to bark, but
Right. I think it's, I think it's kind of like that, you know, that, you know, that, I think that the order is that they are not, you know, they, their dogs are not allowed outside unattended, and they must take whatever actions necessary to ensure the dogs are not barking, are not a barking nuisance inside or outside, until they can demonstrate that the issue has been resolved.
Should we, I'm sorry, should we put in there, you know, what do we consider resolved? Is it the animal control officer satisfaction, our satisfaction?
Neighbor satisfaction.
I think, I think it would have to be, I think it would have to be animal control officer satisfaction, and the neighbors would give their input. I don't, but I don't think we want the neighbors
Right, to be on the
Yeah, that, that puts them in a really awkward spot.
Yeah, no, it was more so, should we, should we leave it up to the professionals or us?
So I think if, that seems reasonable to me, and just want to check in with you gentlemen, is the animal control officers, are you comfortable with that being in the order? That the determination about whether or not they have, the owners have complied with the order to do whatever is needed to stop the dogs barking, that you are, you will verify that. You will follow up and monitor that.
Well, we'll end up monitoring it one way or the other. So I think that's completely appropriate that we're going to end up with it.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Kind and gentle first step, but hopefully we don't have to come back
Right.
Again, but be prepared we do.
Right.
Right, right.
I guess my question also is, do we want to say barking for greater than, let's say, 10 minutes or 15 minutes? No, you just, just stop.
Away from time because it's subjective.
Okay, all right.
Continuous, what's
Well, right, all right.
Nuisance, book area is
All right. Well, and I assume we have reasonable neighbors here that if, if it's short bursts, that they'll be able to tolerate that better than that, that nonstop.
Short bursts is not, it's not a nuisance, right?
Right, exactly.
That's sustained.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, okay. All right. So do we, Jenny, we should, we should vote on the specific language, am I correct? Could we get a draft?
Could we, could we also, though, just add into what I just said, that, you know, just making sure that when we're saying they must not be allowed outside unattended, that we're putting something in there that they, you know, you know, I can't imagine they wouldn't, but, you know, that doesn't mean they can just lock them inside all day, right? I mean, it, it, you know, they need to be treated humanely, you know, so they, they, you know, so something, this is going to be awkward wording, but you know, maybe Jenny or whoever writes this up can make it proper English, but, you know, that, that they are, they are not allowed outside unattended. I don't know how you put it in there, but, you know, that the dogs are treated humanely while inside and not allowed outside unattended. You know, like, the whole nuisance thing where we had where it was an aggressive dog, everything we said was, you know, about humanely, you know, tying them up or humanely putting them in a pen. You know, this is, they're, they're humanely keeping them inside all day and not allowing them out unattended, and keeping, making sure that while they're inside, they aren't a noise nuisance. Was that?
Or it could be, it could be that the, the order is the dogs may not be outdoors unattended until such time as they're able to demonstrate that they are not barking. They are not, they're not continuing to be, to exhibit nuisance barking, and that the dogs will be treated in a humane way, period.
Not humanely treated, they can be seized. Yep. That would solve the problem also.
Say it again, Matt?
If they're not humanely treated, the dogs can be seized.
Yes.
That would solve the problem also.
Yeah. So what if we did it that way, Nathan? It's two sentences in the order.
I, I think that makes sense, as long as we also keep the part about, you know, I worry about the, in the summertime when it's hot and the windows are open, it's not going to help at all if they're barking out the window. So as long as we keep the inside barking piece in there as well.
Okay.
But I've clearly, I've clearly demonstrated I'm not the proper person to make the motion.
Well, yeah, you're, you're trying, though. You're trying. Credit for that. So what if it, what if we said something like, we order that the dogs referenced in this complaint are restricted to being outdoors. They are restricted to, they are restricted from being outdoors unattended until such time as they're able to demonstrate, the owners are able to demonstrate that the nuisance barking is, is resolved, both indoors and outdoors?
Well, I would say if we're going to start with what you just said, and here I'm jumping in again, but I totally love what you said at the beginning part, you know, that, that they're ordered to keep the door, the dogs inside, and, or they're, they're ordered not to let the dogs outside unattended. And, and they must, you know, so just making sure it's an and, they must make sure that, you know, that the dogs are treated humanely, and that there is no nuisance barking while the dogs are inside, until such point as they can demonstrate that the dogs have been through a training or, or, you know, whatever, so that they are no longer a nuisance barking dog.
I like that. A second.
Jenny has something. She didn't like it.
No, I like to find, I was going to make a suggestion that perhaps you just start off the order that says, until such time that the dog's owners can demonstrate to the animal control officers satisfaction that the excessive barking problem has been addressed, colon, and then just list your orders.
Okay.
That sounds great.
That sounds great. And the orders are that the dog may not be outdoor, the dogs may not be outdoors unattended, that the dogs are to be treated humanely, that the, the dogs, the owners, through whatever other remedies they choose, will, will demonstrate that the nuisance barking behavior has been resolved, both indoors and outdoors. Does that work?
So it's, they may not be allowed outside unattended. They must control the barking, whether the dog is inside or outside, and they must, they must continuously keep the dog, treat the dogs humanely.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, I have, so the dogs shall not be permitted to go outside unattended, that's one. The dog, dogs owners shall take all necessary remedial action to prevent excessive barking while the dogs are both inside and outside their home. And three, the dogs shall be treated humanely at all times.
Yes.
Me.
Did you Why don't you, sorry, need to come up to the mic. So, yep.
The question I was going to ask was about training, if you wanted to include anything about training, but I think Jenny just did.
He said all possible remedial action, yeah.
I think
And we could say, including training.
That covers my question.
Okay, thank you. Okay. I think we have a motion, and I'd like to hear a second.
I seconded it already.
All right.
Nathan made the motion, right?
Yeah, around that way, yep.
Yeah, with, with support from town council, yes.
I accepted all the friendly amendments.
Okay, good. All right. Any more discussion by the board?
Just that, once it's passed, what are the mechanics of it?
Well, the town council writes up the order, and then it is signed by me, and then it's delivered to the dog owners.
Person like, where you would deliver?
I think what we did last time was we did a signed receipt return, if I remember correctly, Jenny.
Yeah, we usually send it both ways.
Okay. Sure.
Okay, all right. So let's have a roll call vote, please. Arnold, I.
Oscar Luloy. Brown eye.
O'Dell eye.
Reed eye. All right, thank you all, and
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Ronnie and Steve, and we hope we don't see you again under these same circumstances, although we'd be happy to see you in the neighborhood. Yeah, thank you. And thank you, Matt and Jean, for being here. And Jenny, thanks. And Jonathan, comments. All right, we are moving on. And yes, feel free to depart, although there's a fascinating conversation.
Riveting conversation ahead, don't run off. Or Jack, it's like everybody's leaving.
All right. So we are getting, and Jack, I appreciate your patience. So we are now So we are now at the uh part of the agenda to discuss the Carlisle master plan, and um, this is.
Bring a chair, Jack.
Oh, yeah.
Come over here and bring a chair.
Yeah, you feel free to bring up a chair. Um, so, you know, as we all know, the, the Carlisle master plan steering committee um has completed, gosh, almost five years of work, I guess, um, and has a final draft that we have been provided with uh some time ago, and this is our formal opportunity as a board to provide feedback and input to Jack Tross as the chair of the committee, which is then going to be uh included with other comments that other groups and individuals have provided during this period. And before a final, final version uh goes to the planning board for approval. So, Jack, thank you very much for joining us, and um, I, I did send out something just to the board members and Jack that, I don't know if this is helpful or not, but given how long the um report is, although I'm sure each of us has read it uh page by page entirely. Uh, I, I, I thought it might be helpful just to start with the sort of key focus areas that are outlined right at the beginning of the report. And so they concern uh coordinated land use planning and policy development, coordinated fiscal planning and municipal human resources. The fourth one is coordinated facilities planning, and the fourth one is planning for environmental sustainability. And um, an additional section is about the uh staff and volunteer capacity that would provide some of the tools to conduct or, or resources to conduct the, the, this long range coordinated um effort. So, if that makes sense to everybody uh on the board, um, I thought we could start that way. Since Kate and I have been involved on the master plan steering committee for quite a while now. We will, we will, um, you know, sit back and relax to let Luke and Nathan and David um offer their input, but Jack, I wondered if you had um anything you wanted to say by way of introduction, just briefly.
Well, first of all, it's a pleasure to be here in person and see all you, and Kate and Barney, we've been talking over the screen for a long time, so it's nice to be here. It's also a tough act to follow that uh, one, so I'm sure you guys will be kind to me here. Um, but I, I guess the only thing I would just pick up on what you said Barney is, this has been a long process. But I thought a quick process, a sequence uh would be in order and then happy to talk about specifics in the plan, so we posted the draft um right after I came, or not came, when right after we presented over Zoom to the joint meeting of the planning board and the, and the select board. Um, and that was at the end of February, so uh, at the, right after that, the document went up on the website, and thanks to Mary Lynn, I should say, who's done a lot of our behind the scenes, keeping the website and other things going, and um and that began the public comment period, which ran for approximately a month. We closed that out on March thirty first. Again, there was good coverage uh in terms of reach, outreach to everybody that we had on social media and email, Facebook. You know, again, Mary Lynn did a great job of kind of coordinating that effort. And then uh, there was uh, and I'm sure you saw it, a coverage in the mosquito. And so, we have received uh, you know, I, I think on the one hand, it seems like not a lot of comments, because it's like twenty some odd commenters, twenty six, twenty seven commenters, but there's far more comments, um, because not everybody just offered a single comment. There are some repetition, th- there is some repetition. And the uh master plan steering committee met two weeks ago, and will meet again this week, and we are basically addressing all the comments. And there'll be sort of a two type resolution to every comment. Either we'll say that we've appreciate the comment and offer, again, the justification for why the, the plan offers the information that it's offering and or the recommendation we're proposing. Or, we will say, we agree, we'd like to amend either the text of the report or the recommendation in the following manner. And then, then that document, which will be the final plan at that point, uh, will be uh before the planning board for action, and that date is uh May ninth. I'm sorry, yes. Is, is when they are scheduled. So I will be at the planning board once before then, just to give them a status report and share with them some of the work of the committee, and then uh, we'll have a final review with them on May ninth. So that's just to give you the context from the last time we spoke and where we are today.
So, I think you guys have done a, you know, amazing job, it's been a long journey. I would say that would conclude phase two of three or possibly four phases. So phase one, all the data gathering, kitchen table, surveys, blah, 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 blah. Phase two started with you guys working the report, and then, as you said, you know, vetting it, getting comments, editing, tweaking, presenting, finalizing, so that would complete that. Um, I'm particularly, and it's been fine, you know, observing it and not being involved, I'm happy that people who have the energy and time to, to vote to it are doing that, so I'm very pleased at that. Uh, I'm particularly interested in what I assume it will be phase three, which is actual implementation.
Correct.
So from my standpoint, I have no comments on phases one and two at this point. I'm more interested in phase three. I don't know if that's a tonight discussion or some future discussion.
Well, it certainly can. I think if you recall, one of the recommendations that we made at the, at that meeting, and I know that, you know, Madeline on behalf of the planning board was particularly keen on this is you know, that they think it's, it's a, it's a joint responsibility, but, but primarily in the hands of the select board to, you know, essentially appoint an implementation committee, and, and we recommend that. And, and that would be how we move from the guidance to the implementation.
But for tonight, maybe, so that's um definitely a, a good conversation to have. We could have it tonight unless others on the board have more um, have comments or questions about the specific uh recommendations. And so Nathan and Luke, I'm really looking toward the two of you, um, if there was anything in particular you wanted to offer or ask about um, in the, in terms of the content.
Well, yeah, and I'll, I'll go first, Luke. I mean, I think, um, you know, number, you know, I think, first of all, I think I moving on to like deciding on step three is probably getting a little ahead of ourselves. But that's just my, my own opinion, you know, I, I do think that this is really, really great. Uh, I did read through it all. Um, I do have a question, and you know, I know that um, you know, Kate and Barney, you, you, you said that you were going to sit back and, and let Luke and, and Dave and I ask all the questions, but I have a question for you, because it's not often that we actually have two select board members that are on a committee and as active as you both have been in, in helping this through. So my question for you is like, what do you, what do you both think are like the two greatest strengths in this proposal in, in this document, in this plan?
There you go.
Like that, you guys are gonna.
Yeah, really. Well, you know, actually, I, I can give my answer to that because in a way, it's spelled out right at the beginning in the summary, which, which I completely agree with, which is the the, the development of this, you know, we've, we've said along, actually not just in the master plan steering committee, but I know we've said this here in the board and, and other groups have, that, you know, you have the plan and, and unless it gets um implemented, you know, it's uh, it's meaningless. And one of the things that is, comes through this so clearly is the need for coordinated uh planning. And so if you look at the, I, I think the key things that are here that need to be implemented are around coordinated land use planning and policy development, you know, we've talked about that over the last couple of years, you know, in sort of fits and starts um outside of the master plan in terms of you know, how that works in town hall and the different boards that are involved in that. Similarly, with the fiscal planning and human resources, municipal resources, again, you know, we've talked about that off and on as a board. This, this plan, you know, just says it really clearly right up front. The need for coordinated planning and, and coordinated use, you know, through of our human resources. Similarly, the coordinated facilities planning, which is already underway, but this just adds more uh emphasis and um, and detail to that. And then finally, the planning for environmental sustainability, which I do think is a relatively new piece for the, for the select board to think about, and this is giving us some specifics um on that, that we have not, I think, touched on as a board so much as we have the other three areas, so I know it's maybe a, an, a simple answer, but to me, that is the most clear thing and most important thing that comes out of this plan.
I would, I, I would agree with that, and the other thing that comes out is of, of this plan are recommendations that in order to achieve all this, we're going to have to look very carefully at our staff and at the functions that our staff are fulfilling. And the functions that maybe are not being fulfilled right now that need to get fulfilled down the line.
And just on that point, Kate, I would add that um, you know, there were some comments about adding staff and concerns about what that meant, and, and the master plan steering committee took that up. And we are very much in support of the idea of focusing on functions, not on people. And that's the issue, and so those recommendations where it refers to, you know, a person is now referred to as these functions um as critical, so I'm, I'm glad you brought that up.
I think that's a good point.
So.
Alright, here you go, Luke.
I, I don't really have much, I don't know how the hell we're gonna pay for it, but um, but no, I mean, I, I, I think ultimately, a lot of these recommendations are great. And I think, I think what Carlisle has to be better at is the, as you said, the coordinated planning. I mean, we have people offering us money to do things and we screw it up, right?
Yeah. And have a plan to start with.
But it's also, no, but it's also competing interests, right? So I mean, for this to work, right, for this to truly, people have to get out of their own little agenda and focus on Carlisle as a whole, and that's going to be the trick, Jack.
It's always, that's exactly right.
Because be, I, because you just see this, you know, I, I mean, you know, the, a potential pickleball slash community center slash whatever. It was a perfect example. I mean, we had somebody offering us money, right? And, and certain people wouldn't even have conversations, right, about what we could do there, right? And, and it was just, it was dead in the water before it even started to really gain any traction, and I think that's where you know, when, when people have certain agendas, I think that's going to be the hardest thing to overcome, right? And I think what we've seen just in, you know, my um teen years now doing town stuff is, you know, when we have a, when we had a tag group, right, so we had somebody from housing, we had somebody from planning, we had somebody from concept. And everybody was forced in a room, right, one or two people from each interest, you know, and you had to come to a resolution. That's when stuff actually happened, that's when stuff moved forward, you know, it's, it's, I, I think that's going to be the hardest trick with all of this is you know, getting those silos to work together, and you know, I, I, I mean, I think the, the, the function piece is huge, right? Because you have, because again, it's siloed, right, people think this is my job and, and I'm the only one that can do this, and will, and that's not true. You know, I mean, ask for help, get help, branch out, you know, and work together on something to, to get a solution. I mean, it's, you know, it's frustrating when, you know, the, the talent is there and the effort is there, but everybody's just spinning their wheels, right? So um, in addition to the financial piece, I, which is going to be another trick, but you know, I mean, I, I think a lot of these, it's just, yeah, it's a tremendous amount of work, a tremendous amount of data collected, um, you know, pulling it all together. I'll be honest with you, I didn't think you were going to with, with the group that was coming in. I was, I was very skeptical, but you guys did. And yeah, no, I, I think it'd be a shame now to not, you know, get that last piece, you know, together to, to move this thing forward. At least some of them, I mean, the, the other piece too is, you know, there, there are so many different recommendations, but you gotta pick and choose, right? Like obviously, which ones, you know, should we tackle first and, and which one?
Well, that's why we tried to highlight that in the executive summary, because there was a concern that there, there were an enormous number of recommendations, as there normally are in a master plan, because it is designed to look out over twenty-five to thirty years. But we did try to use the executive summary to highlight those that we thought. For example, you know, looking at the facilities in a, in a townwide context. I, I can't underscore how important that is, you know, the, the comment about, that you just made Luke, about an opportunity for a particular investment in a facility is not going to be easily uh evaluated if there isn't a bigger perspective on what those other needs are, whether they're public safety, community, you know, I, and, and you're absolutely right. You know, this has been sort of threading a needle, because the interests of people who want more open space, they're very conscious of that, there are people who want community facilities, and they're very strong in their views about that. There's people who want to see changes in the housing, and we really tried to look at all these different interests, because that's the whole nature of the plan, and, and offer those opinions. And, you know, it, it, I, I think it, it's about, about that challenge of as you said, taking these different interests, competing interests. And, and, and if you get people in a room, you'll find out, maybe they're not really.
Well, exactly, no, exactly.
You know, maybe there are things that we have a common goal.
Right, but if, you gotta get them in that room.
Right, right.
Right, so I think, I think I agree with everything that has been said just now. I, it points back to the challenge of implementation, so I just make a couple of comments, I know we're not moving there yet, but first of all, Carlisle is a, my, one reason I personally love town government is because it's a scaled down version of everything that goes on in the country. You know, we, we have a, a mini version, right, so people do have their own interests and the interests sometimes compete. But when we get together, democracies are messy and, and getting consensus is a messy process. It's a lot easier to, you know, order things to be, but it creates a better work product. So this is the, you know, the work of democracy, right, is to reach out to all the parties. To draw two parallels, one, back to the pickleball. I do not think it, at the end of the day, it was a failure for competing interests. I think it was a, it was a misstep politically in the way it was rolled out, to engage those people early before it got parked was what was missing, and certain constituents were very anti, but they weren't. To your point, there was not enough outreach early, and so I think the outreach that you did do and the outreach that must continue in what everybody's saying, and when, when we get to implementation, to, to pick and choose, of course, prioritize, and then very careful outreach to all the groups to get their, you know, another version of what you got, like comments, and maybe you have to tweak something in your approach. The, the other parallel I want to draw is the governance committee, where the origin of it was a cross-functional committee that actually had consensus among competing interests. Again, in my opinion, a misstep to create a totally independent committee that did not liaise with those stakeholders until they had a finished product, and then, oh, they woke up and people didn't like the finished product. Well, guess what? You didn't talk to those people about what you were thinking of. So it gets back to the same thing. When we do form implementation, it must be cross-functional, and then, even though it's cross-functional, that's not enough. You gotta then, when they decide, they gotta go outreach and they have to make sure that they retail those solutions. What, again, what's great about here is we are small enough that retail politics works. You know, we have competing interests and we got this and that, we got people, you know, we don't, don't agree and are, you're. We got people, you know, we don't, don't agree and are illogical perhaps in their disagreement. But we're small enough, if you put the effort in, you can do it. So I absolutely agree, and I think that's a really good guidepost for the way we need to progress, you know, when we get to that place.
And I think the recommendation does say a cross-functional implementation. So we're completely in support of that and encourage that, because I don't think it's gonna work, obviously, if, if the implementation committee just goes off and, and does things without coordinating with the FinCom and the, you know, the select board, the planning board, for example.
Right.
But, you know, it's interesting historically, as you were speaking, Luke, because the town obviously is small. It's built its government sort of from the bottom-up historical, you know? But the world has gotten more complicated and, and the town has gotten, even though it doesn't seem like it, a lot bigger. And it has a lot of other challenges, if you will, that the notion that people working for a board or a committee only at their direction is really not a, a constructive, in, in my opinion, constructive way to, to go about it, right? Because it just keeps the silo independent.
Right.
So.
Nathan, did you wanna offer a comment?
Yeah, I just, it's just two things, and I'm, and I'm responding to recent comments and, and, and comments that were made quite a while ago. You know, one is just, you know, kind of about the prioritization that, that Luke was saying is, you know, I, I think, you know, these are all great projects. I think some of them we will never do. But I, you know, I hope that many, many of them we do do. I think it's going to really come down to what is the priority? What is, what is the financing? And what makes sense particularly as time goes on, our needs will change. And some of these, these won't be potentially, they, they won't be as important. In, in talking about like an implementation thing, one thing that, one thing that I really want us to think about is how, how we can make this kind of ingrained in everything we do. And so, you know, I just, you know, I worry that if we select a quote-unquote "implementation committee," what we're doing is we're, we're creating a conflict, right? We, we aren't gonna have one committee that's saying, these are the things we need to do, and other committees are gonna be trying to do the day-to-day thing. And so, you know, you know, I don't think we need to get into it right now, but, you know, what I'd like us to talk about and why I don't wanna get into it right now is how, how do we actually instill this? How do we build this in so that as committees and, and departments are doing things, they, they are thinking about this on an ongoing basis? And maybe we have a committee that's kind of an advisory committee that, that the departments and, and other committees and boards can go to and say, we're thinking about this, what do you think about this? Rather than, you know, say, hey, you drive this master planning committee implementation. I just see a conflict between kind of the, the day-to-day work of the board and this committee, unless we figure out how this is ingrained in the DNA of everybody. And we have this, these reference people we can go to to make sure that we're on track.
I, I think some of the, I totally agree with you, Nathan. And I think some of this will be coming through our goal-setting procedure every year. And I, one of our goals this year seems to me was that we were gonna try to have like a breakfast or something with the, you know, chairs and, you know, it's like informational thing. Maybe, of course, COVID, we still, you know, haven't gotten that up. But I think what's something about what you were talking about would be answered by getting those kind of more social, you know, even information sharing.
Right, and get all the boards to do that, right? Because not all the boards are under our purview, but everybody needs to.
No, no, it would have to be all the boards. It has to be run basically, I'd say, by us. But, so I think, and but as I said also then, I think also that goal-setting, that, you know, we, either the select board or the select board in conjunction with the implementation board would say, all right, the goal this year is, or our goals, you know, these are the goals for the town. And you Board of Health, and you ConsCom, and you, you know, even DPW, these are the things that you need to keep in your mind first and foremost when you make decisions.
But, but to synthesize, I, I, I agree also with what was said. But, I mean, you know, Nathan's making a really good point, which is it's not for another committee to layer on another, you know, mandate. But the flip side, which also is not addressed by us, you know, putting goals on. I mean, we should definitely use this as a roadmap for our goal-setting, absolutely. And the committees should also take their respective parts, the, the current committees. But I could see it, because everybody, I mean, one reason that they're siloed is not that people want to be siloed. It's just that you have a pile of stuff you have to do. Like your job, if you're Board of Health, you know, and they're very clear, like, we gotta do these things, we gotta make sure the water supply's safe and you're good. And, and yeah, you know, some personalities are a play and maybe they get sort of a little prickly sometimes when they perceive interference. But basically, they're saying, I got so much to do, like, I just gotta do my job. Please let me do my job. And so when we add in some layer, which is across the functions, we have to, you know, again, back to implementation, we have to acknowledge that we are adding load. Now, we should not, and I agree with Nathan, we should not lord it on, you know, from on high, thou shalt, right? We have to work from within, but to ask them, you know, what I, the risk of asking them to do it is just adding a task. I do think there's a role, and this is a great discussion, because we really should think carefully about how it's structured. But I think there's a role of a group, just like their side, whose mission is, take these things, think about them, work with the committees to figure out what's practical, and help them with those pieces. You gotta weave it that way, because as soon as we just give them more to do, there's just more to do, you know? And, and, and so it's a, it's a careful thing. You know, we should definitely, you know, after, it sounds like there's a couple of months now to, you know, wait for planning and stuff, but we should take the time and talk to these guys in planning board and really think through, like, what's the effective way we can actually, you know, mine this treasure trove of, of input?
Right, and I think the implementation is intended to be one that's thoughtful and not, you know, you become yet another board and committee that runs, you know, on your own track. And, and, you know, it's interesting, the consultant did a information session with the staff as well. And the staff was equally strong in their view that there wasn't enough cross-pollination.
Staff of the town hall.
Staff of the town hall. So, you know, it's, it's, they're feeling it. The boards and committees, to the extent that, that they come up against a conflict with another board and committee feels it. And so I think, to your point, David, it makes a lot of sense to make sure that this implementation is well-thought-out and well-coordinated more than anything. And, and, you know, with things like the, the planning board fulfilling, filling a new position, you know, would that be filled in a different way because of these function needs? You know, the, the new town administrator, other things? These are the, the things to be considered as the town looks down the road, right? And, and, you know, some of these things are relatively short. And some of them are very expensive, as you said, Luke. They, they will involve, you know, buying land, for example. It's not gonna come cheap in Carlisle, even if the town buys it from a friendly seller. But, you know, doing a facility study is not a huge expense, you know, to do one and look at all the facilities and, and the facility needs. There was only one done on the, looking at a few facilities and really looking, David, at, at the deferred maintenance issue. It was never done with respect to, what do we need space for? Who needs space? Is there a community space need? Is there a, you know, council on aging component? And that's all pretty well laid out in the report. The other thing is something like doing, and I know this controversy cropped up recently with the governance committee on the FinCom, but looking out at the expenses for the town. And obviously, the budget is its own function, and it should be. But looking out five budgets ahead is not unreasonable function to undertake for the town. You know, I think it's just common sense, and it doesn't require a huge, you know, it, it does require some read adjustment, because somebody's gotta take something off their plate to take on an additional task. So we agree with that.
And I just wanna follow up on the, the sort of discussion about, you know, getting board chairs and boards, you know, interacting, cooperating more. You know, I think we as a select board can take a really strong role in making that happen. We've, we've kind of had some fits and starts over the years in terms of having people come to the select board to talk about what their board's goals are. But we have not, we can, we can play a big role in making that cross-board, you know, interaction socially and then both, and also in, you know, kind of function, what we're, what, what they're trying to do. And at the same time, I think our town staff need to be going through the same kind of cross-communication, you know, coming together more regularly, cross-training. And that's really where our current town administrator and then eventually our new town administrator are gonna play a huge role in trying to, to make that happen in a way that also breaks down those silos. So I think we, you know, there, there was two pieces of it and, and we can really, we really should play a big role on the, on the volunteer side.
Yeah, I, I completely agree with you, Barney, and that's, you know, that's, I think, part of what I was saying. I think, I think that it's about goals, it's about understanding, you know, where everybody is going and, and ensuring, and I think that that rests on the Board of Selectmen. And so I worry about setting up an implementation committee, you know, an implementation committee and say, hey, you go make sure that this, this, this happens. I think that's just gonna create conflict. You know, I look at it as more as, you know, we need to, we need to be driving what the goals are. We need to be saying, you need to be thinking about the master plan. We're interested in your thoughts on your priorities and, and how that would impact. And you have to work with the other boards as you're building your plans. And we have this group that will, that you can work with to work through those priorities. And that's this advisory master planning committee.
Luke, do you wanna say something?
Yeah, no, I was just actually just gonna add to what, to what you were saying with the staff coming together. And, you know, town hall functioned better when there were the monthly, well, it started out as, what, every other week, right? Or, or even just monthly staff meetings, right? Where everybody got together, everybody kind of had their say in whatever was going on, right? And you just, one, you felt a sense of, you know, community, if you will, right? But also, two, you know, it, it gets you learning what's going on with other people. And, I mean, and it was clear, kinda, you know, as it happens, right? Four weeks through, oh, well, we can't meet this, so we'll push it off two weeks, and then that doesn't happen. But, you know, two weeks turns into four, turns into six, turns into eight, turns into zero, right? So I think that's the, the piece too, where either, you know, Steve is the interim or Steve is the permanent. But, but, you know, and I think that's something that's gotta be driven by the board as well, right? You know, just forcing those things to happen, because as soon as they start to fall off the table, everybody kind of goes back to doing what they do best, right? And, and you lose that, and it's unfortunate, because.
We're all gonna start then again.
And, and COVID certainly has not helped.
Right, right.
Yeah, when folks are remote and everything, I mean.
Also, climate food is a great motivator.
Oh, yeah. Yes.
And to David's point, you know, all these boards have their functions that they're mandated to oversee, you know? Whether it's hearings on, you know, permits or planning board approval or ConsCom, Wetlands hearings. And so that business has to continue on in a way. And, and you have to figure out, okay, so beyond that, how do we make this happen?
I think we're saying this, I mean, whether we call it advisory committee or implementation committee, maybe advisory is better, but I think it's the same, you know? We're, we're talking about the same thing, which is help them, help those committees or those boards and employees who are tasked with really actually the implementation, help them, guide them, you know, prioritize both in time and importance, the many recommendations that are here, right? And, and, you know.
I think too, the, the Board of Selectmen too could take a few of the recommendations, you know, the, the low-hanging fruit, if you will, and say, you know, these are the things that we think we oughta, we oughta move on. You know, whether it's a facility study or it's a long-term planning function or whatever it is, and, you know, pick out of the, you know, the, the priority recommendations, pick a few and run with them as well. I mean, that's another option. I mean, I think, Kate, you and Barney have commented that there's a number of recommendations in the report that are already part of the select board's goals. Now, we were careful, there was a comment, because we're a bottoms-up, you know, report. And the comment in the, in the comment section was, you know, why is this select board goal mentioned? Well, no, the, the reason the select board goal was mentioned is because it was consistent with the goal that came from the public process, so.
You mean, we got one right?
At least, at least. No, so there's.
Right, I know, I agree with that, but even low-hanging fruit is not low-hanging, really. I mean, every, we know, every little thing takes so much work, right? And we, we can't also spread ourselves too thin. I mean, we spend, you know, and it's important, right? But let's, let's be, let's get, be clear-eyed about the way that town of Carlisle runs, with a town administrator, not a town manager, and, you know, a whole bunch. We're having dialogues about that, right? But we're the nighttime government. We just spent an hour on a barking dog. One, two barking dogs on one street. We have to do it, but there's an hour plus probably another hour prep or whatever. You know, resources are finite. So even if we were to take what looks like a simple thing, it's not simple. These two here spent, I don't know, unbelievable hours working on the human resource. It needed doing, but it really could've used probably, you know, a professional to help them, right? So I, I think, yes, we need to, I mean, it's a good probably thought exercise for us to take these curated ones like that Barney has here. And we might this summer, you know, really spend some time in our sort of general planning, thinking about prioritizing and how we might do that. And then maybe we defer actually how to do it to, once we've figured out the list. So that's true, I agree with that. But I don't want us to be unrealistic about us taking a leadership, you know, leadership. We need help, and one of the things in here is we need more volunteers. We really gotta, right, get some other people involved, and they certainly can be people who have served in master planning, to help just do stuff, you know? We all have the greatest intentions, but I, I know my own energy level and I know all the things I got going on, so.
But we appreciate the challenges that, and, and I, I got to bear witness to the, to the trial, so.
Yeah.
For the hearing. I can appreciate that you're not just sitting back looking for these things to weigh in on, so.
So I think we've, we've probably come to the end of our discussion for tonight, but we definitely, I think we've all been saying, and we wanna continue the discussion about whatever you wanna call it, the implementation or what, you know, how we move the plan forward. So we'll look forward to seeing the final version and, you know, and attending, I think there's, a lot of us will attend the planning board meeting, I'm sure, where this is gonna be finalized. So I know it's kind of, I'm speaking to myself too, but I will, Jack, I wanna just express our great appreciation to you and the rest of the committee.
Tremendous work that you put into it, Jack.
And all the other people that over the last four or five years have worked on it. I mean, if you look at that report and all the list of names, those people, every single person there has made a contribution. And then you have all the countless people that filled out surveys and came to meetings and did kitchen conversations, et cetera. So it really has been a tremendous process.
No, I appreciate that, and I couldn't have done what I've done in the last, what, 18 months if it hadn't been set up. And I, and I think Madeline did a great job at the joint meeting before we got going to say, you know, this is, this is how it's been happening. So I appreciate that. I certainly appreciate both your, Barney and Kate, your involvement in particular, but also the support of the, of the board, the select board in general. And, you know, look forward to continuing to work with you on this and, and. And, you know, look forward to continuing to work with you on this and, and take it to the next step, as you said, David, to the, to the next phase.
Yeah, yeah, good.
Great. All right.
Yeah, thank you, Jack.
Thank you.
See you tomorrow.
Right. Alrighty. Well, aren't we glad we did some of the work earlier, right? Because so we've already done, so we need to do the discussion about town meeting. But I don't think this will take too long. And we are actually close to on time. We're only 11 minutes over. So I, I want to take the, the, the number three and number four under the town meeting preparations first, because they're the ones that I think that require a little more discussion, which is the vote on whether or not to reduce the quorum for town meeting, which is somewhat related to the discussion about the potential for changing the venue. I don't know that, is Wayne on the call? It doesn't look like he's, has he joined? Yes, he has. Hi, Wayne. Great. Thanks for being here. And hi, Jim. I see Jim Dara on the call too now. So who, who wants to, David's out of the room now. I know he checked in with, with Tony Mariano. Wayne, do you want to offer your thoughts about the, the setup for town meeting and whether, what you think about trying to provide people with a sense of it being a safe, comfortable place to come, given any concerns about COVID?
So I, I will express my personal opinion and try to convey as accurately as I can what I heard from the Board of Health when I met with them two, two weeks ago.
Okay.
Yeah. So in terms of, of logistics, the Board of Health did not, at the time, and this was an opinion I shared, did not see any reason to delay or move the venue. The COVID numbers in terms of what is actually, the main things that are being tracked these days are hospitalizations, positivity rates and some of the other metrics that carried a lot of weight previously are much less, considered much less indicative for a whole variety of reasons. And so they were not seeing a whole lot of concern in the information that they were getting from the state. And I don't see a whole lot of concern either. And I've, I've continued to track. Hospitalizations are up a very minor amount, not much. There's slight uptick in the wastewater, which seems to be probably the most reliable leading indicator at this point. But even there, I'm not hearing any alarm bells. What we talked about was, okay, how do we make sure that people feel comfortable? And that was, that was my chief concern. I, I wanted, you know, anyone who felt even immunocompromised to feel comfortable. And what we came up with is a couple of things. And one, this is predicated on my assessment that we do not have a controversial warrant. We're not voting on the town clerk. We don't have a dog leash law. We don't have deer hunting. We don't have pickleball. I don't see a whole, I don't see us getting three or four or 500 people out. The capacity in the auditorium with the back open is about 460. And then we have the cafeteria as well. And so it seemed to me that by designating certain portions of the auditorium as required social distance spacing, if you sit in that particular section, plus anyone who wants to be in the cafeteria so that they could have, you know, basically move their chair around and be wherever they want. Plus, Dr. Berry suggested that we both bring in portable air filters, which the school has some, but also allow anyone who wants to bring their own air filter in to have them in the cafeteria. And it was their sense that with the widespread availability of N95 masks, that if people felt, you know, a little bit risk averse, that between masking and the ability to have your own air filter and the ability to sit at a distance from people, that it should probably be adequate. And I think that was, I, I think it's fair to, I'm trying as accurately as I can to convey what I, I heard from them. And that's my personal opinion as well. And while I haven't seen anything in statistics over the last week, that would cause me to change my view, we're all continuing to look at it. And we have, the, the Board of Health will be meeting tomorrow. And then again, they've, they've tentatively scheduled for two weeks hence. So that if we need to make a last minute call a week before town meeting about changing things, we can. And in my judgment, staying the course is the greatest likelihood of least disruption. So I would not, if you ask my advice, it would be, let's stick with the schedule and stick with the venue.
Okay, thanks, Wayne. David, did you want to follow up with anything?
Yeah, well, yeah, well, really first a question for Wayne and for the select board. Do you feel that the product in an outdoor setting, we've had several of those now, is noticeably inferior to the indoor setting?
I don't feel that the product is noticeably inferior. It's a whole lot more work on the part of a whole lot more people, including, including your public safety personnel.
If it's a small group, as you say, and it's, we have the space at the school under the canopy, what is the ex, there's a detail needed, I guess, but they probably have a detail anyway, don't they, on the inside one? And setting up some chairs, which we could have volunteers do. I, I guess I don't understand why.
All the tech has to go outside, Dave. That's, that's a lot of work.
There's no lights up there. So we would have to change the time in the day.
It would be a daytime thing. It would be a weekend. So I'm about, listen, I'm about risk, okay? And, and, and I, I don't know. I, I find that the, the Board of Health has inward-looking data, okay? I look at forward-looking data. I look at Europe. I look at China. I look at the world and I see what I believe is coming, which is another, you know, little spike. And I think about the largest, well, maybe not with spaghetti supper, which is a whole nother thing in the play. But I don't run the schools, so they do what they want. But we are, we are about to plan from a town perspective, the biggest single indoor gathering that we have had since the pandemic started. And to me, honestly, we're shouldering risk we don't have to shoulder. And I just wonder whether we've looked at it through that lens. I'm happy to go with, I knew that, you know, it'll be an unpopular stance. But I do think that's the point of view that I'm taking, is why take additional risk we don't have to? When we've proven we can run an effective outdoor meeting, and yeah, I get it, there's IP and there's this and there's that. But we can do it and we can do it successfully. And we dramatically reduce the risk if it's in an outdoor venue. And that's my point. And I'm happy to be overruled, but that's my point.
Other comments on the question of staying the course, as Wayne said, or making a change?
Has the warrant gone out and does it, what date does it have printed on it? And will this cost a huge mishegoss in the town?
Yeah, Jen told me today, in fact, that the book is at the printers. It'll be ready by the end of the week. So she mailed on, on, she was going to arrange postage on Thursday so that it would be mailed out on Friday. So I, it's probably, I don't know that, I mean, assuming it's done, you know what I mean? It's, or it's close to done being printed. But Steve, do you have a comment?
The only comment I would have, if it is posted and the moderator could correct me, is that kind of have to open the town meeting and then continue it to another date certain? So some, so some people would have to show up just to, to vote.
You can't, you don't have any more advance notice to just change it?
I, I think once it's posted, it's posted.
You can't unpost and repost?
I don't think so. Which is what, if the mailing's gone out.
Yeah, we've gone through that before, haven't we?
Yeah. So, so, yeah, yeah. So, so the answer is, yeah, once it's posted, it, it's posted. The, the sort of the legalities of it are the least of the, the difficulties. It's much more about, you've got to work with the, the PA people to find a date that works for them. You also need to coordinate with the Minuteman TV on, you know, on their availability so that it can be, it can be broadcast. And, and so there, 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 you know, additional complications. So I mean, that, that can all be worked out. Let, let's just say that, that in, if you accept David's analysis and say, okay, we, there's a risk here that we don't want to take. The cost of the insurance that you're going to have to pay is, you know, some hard dollar cost in, in additional, it's a lot more expensive to do the outdoor setup. I don't know how much more expensive. But you'll, you'll pay more in that and more time and attention of everybody involved to sort of reorganize it. And you'll have to figure out how exactly, once you do pick the new date, how we all publicize that. All of it is doable. It's just, it's not free, is my point.
Yes, I guess I would say that, you know, you know, if, if, you know, I, I would, I would vote for, for staying the course. And, and I think if, as we get closer to it, those numbers do tick up a little bit more. Where we start getting a little bit more nervous about it, we can still have it there and just say, okay, everybody wear a mask. And, and, you know, rather than doing, you know, I mean, it would depend upon how things were. But I mean, there, there are many options of how we can deal with it. You know, but I think the numbers, you know, I, I would, you know, the, the numbers do seem to be okay, that we should just move forward.
Well, actually, requiring a mask is not a stupid idea. That might be a good compromise. That's pretty low cost, right? Show up, wear a mask. I would support that.
Yeah. We could even, I'm, I wonder if the Board of Health still has a trailer full of masks that we could hand out when people check in.
Yeah, I think we see as we get closer, right?
Yeah. Yeah, we have a meeting on the 19th. A regularly scheduled meeting. We can always call a special one if we needed to. Yeah. I am, I am also inclined to stay with what we've decided and keep monitoring the situation.
I, I agree. Okay, yeah. On, on the other hand, I'd like to talk about the reduced quorum because that's always something I'm very, very supportive of.
So. All right. So let's move to that question. So we have, you know, for the, previously, we, during COVID, when we've had the outdoor meetings, we've reduced the quorum. The quorum is currently, is it 150, right? So we've had it as low as 75. And I think, didn't we have it at 100 the last time? Yeah. So any initial comments from anyone on the board? Or then I will ask Wayne for his comment.
I guess 100, 150 is what, 2% of the town population, or what it is of the?
200?
We're, we're, we're at about 3,900 to 4,000 registered voters.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't like the idea of reducing quorum. I never have. But nothing controversial on this.
Yes, that's 3.8%. We're only asking 3.8% of the population. I mean, the population is growing. And so the idea of reducing the quorum, I think just means there's less of a representation.
I agree with that. On the other hand, if there's nothing, you know, kind of pressing or, you know, people don't have any skin in this game, they may not come. And if, and then on top of that, you add maybe a little uptick and they're a little more leery, then we don't get a meeting either.
We're not limiting, we're not putting a capacity constraint.
No, no, no. It's right. It's the minimum we need.
There's nothing to do. It's just, it's the practicality of get the meeting done and not have to go do phone banking, which we've had to do in the past. So, right. It's just a floor. It's not a ceiling.
But it's also, I mean, I
I don't think calling is a problem. I mean, I think, you know, we've never failed to get a quorum before.
It's taken some extra time.
Yes, it's taken some time, quite a bit of time on, on occasion.
Especially the third day of your town meeting, Nathan.
Yeah. I just, you know, just wanted to make sure we all had some quality time together as a town.
Yeah, that was great.
I, I honestly, a quorum, you know, is, I came from Concord where the quorum was very low. And now Steve tells me the quorum is zero in Concord.
Oh, wow.
Most towns I've worked in have been zeros, yeah.
Yeah. So I'm not sure that quorums necessarily guarantee anything. You know, people are either going to come or they're not going to come.
Right, but it does avoid the delay of, you know, avoid the delay.
In, in this case, I'd rather not sit around waiting for people to come, breathing other people's air until we, you know, till the sick ones arrive.
But, you know, just to, I don't know, support what Luke is referring to. You know, there's another side to this, which is what, what we're trying to promote in town, you know, in terms of participation. And it sends a signal, I think, that
It doesn't promote. It does not promote participation.
Well, no, I'm just saying, I think the quorum though is, you know, it, it, either we don't, we shouldn't have one at all, or it's, it, it represents kind of, sort of the, the minimum democratic participation that we want in making decisions about the town's future. So I, I don't want to get hung up on this particular meeting in the quorum. I think we are, we could still, you know, decide to lower it partly because we are still recovering from COVID and hopefully we are not going back into a, a spike. But anyway, but I, I, I do feel that message that, that, that's part of this. Shall we, Wayne, do you have any comment on the quorum question for this particular town meeting?
Yeah, I, I do. Thank you, Barney. I, I would not be in favor of reducing it for this meeting. While I actually agree with Kate and think that long-term, the right answer is probably a zero quorum. Paradoxically, that actually tends to promote more participation as people worry about, you know, what happens if, you know, 10 yahoos show up and vote however they want. But that's a decision for town meeting itself to make. The legislature gave select boards an extraordinary emergency power to do something that normally you wouldn't have the power to do, which is to, you, you can sort of take the town meeting's prerogative to change its quorum. And just because you have the power doesn't mean you should use it. And I think you only use it if you really need it. And, you know, if I were worried enough about the health situation that I thought that we ought to be moving outside, yeah, then I'd probably be in favor of reducing the quorum. But since I, my, my read of the situation and my read of other people's behavior is that I don't think it's going to skip. What's going to keep people away is not a concern about COVID. It's just they, you know, they may not be interested. But I think our history has been that the first night of a town meeting, you know, we may, we may wait 10 minutes, but it's pretty rare that we don't get a quorum for the first night. It's the second and, you know, Nathan's famous third night, where we've sometimes It's the second and, you know, Nathan's famous third night, uh, where we've sometimes had to wait. But, um, first, I, I'm, I'm just not worried about it for this year. And, and I, I do think it's, it's taking an extraordinary move that, that is uncalled for, uh, at this time.
All right, so my sense, uh, does, does anyone want to propose a lowering of the quorum?
Well, I see which one, which way the wind is blowing.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like we're not going to lower it. But, but let me just, let me just mention that Mr. Davis has the luxury of participating remotely by Zoom because we took extraordinary measures to, in my opinion, make a smarter and broader way of participation, which is let people be remote and let people show up. In fact, Mr. DeCock, very unusually, did both tonight. You know, I've, I've never heard of before, but that's, that's great. So, I mean, my point is that just, just because the legislature gave the boards extraordinary powers or whatever, we're getting to smarter stuff about the way we do business. The pandemic is pushing us to be smarter. This is an example of being smarter. More people can participate in different places. I don't think making a smaller quorum and getting on with it is dumb. I think it's smart because I've been in many of these meetings and we've waited around and it's a pain. And, you know, if, if people don't want to show, then don't show, but let's not penalize the rest of them. So even though I know that we will, once again, I'll be in the minority, but I think we should move the quorum to 100.
Well, I'm, I'm happy to entertain a motion. But if we, no one wants to put a motion forward, then, um,
I'm going to move, I'm going to move it, okay. All right, I move, uh, this select board vote to reduce the quorum of the April 25th, 2022 annual town meeting from 150 votes.
Who?
To, well, we're going to lower it. To 75 voters.
Yeah, I mean, 100.
Okay, I'll do it at 100 then.
I second that 100.
Okay.
25.
Okay, any more discussion? All right, hearing none, uh, let's take a roll call vote. A motion is to reduce the quorum to 100, right?
Oh, you want me to start?
Yeah. Well, when,
No, I said,
A friend just came through.
No, I, but I said, I mean, I, I don't think we should change it. It's a slippery slope, but again, I don't think there's much on this that's very controversial. So it's going to be a short town meeting unless Wayne gets talking, but.
Right, so Ask, Uh, Ask Alai, Brown?
I'm sorry, did, did Barney, did you go?
No, I did not.
Who's last, so using your chair prerogative.
Yeah.
Brown, nay.
Or Alai?
Reed, I. Arnold, nay. But that's fine, that's fine, 3 to 2. So we've voted to lower the quorum to, uh, 100. Okay, uh, let's go on to, uh, we don't need to do the vote final positions. He really did that, this was a misnomer in the agenda. The assignment of the articles, since it's, uh, now, um, 9:34, unless somebody wants to argue, we have to do that before the 19th.
No, we don't.
Because the motions handbook can include, it does need to include who's making, moving the motion, right? So, okay, and then, um, yeah, the, people could, uh, if people want to indicate before them which ones they want to do, that would be helpful. And Luke particularly, since you're not going to be there, um,
I'll take the crappy ones.
You can take the crappy ones?
Yeah.
Okay, and the CPC?
CPC, yeah. Well, I have to do my own little spiel.
Yeah, yeah, you've got a big, yeah, okay. Before we get to that though, uh, Jonathan DeCock has very kindly, uh, joined us for the discussion, uh, that was within the town administrator's report about the, um, E V chargers at the school and are the decision we need to make tonight, or at least is before us tonight. We may or may not feel ready to make it, but about, um, voting to determine, uh, at what level we're going to charge, um, for the usage of the, of the, um, stations. So with that, um, Jonathan, we, I had sent out your, um, document that you provided yesterday. So it's not in the packet, you, everybody, but.
I don't think Jonathan's on, I think Bob is on, but I don't see Jonathan.
Oh, Jonathan, sorry, he's right here.
May I approach the bench?
Oh. He's moved on me.
Are you talking about the one that Jen sent out today? I don't think it's, I don't think she included it in that. It's the piece I sent, no, that's from the packet.
Those are the decision points.
What I sent you yesterday afternoon was Jonathan's very extensive report on, um, where we are with the charging stations. So, um, welcome Jonathan, thank you very much. And Jonathan was, um, a key leader on the, uh, Energy Task Force in, um, the whole effort to get these, uh, charging stations set up at the school parking lot. So we don't have tons of time, Jonathan, so, uh, but it would be great if you wanted to just give us a very brief reminder of, um, how these charging stations are set up and then what we need to decide in terms of pricing.
Okay, uh, sure.
Great.
So I just want to say, I'm very happy that, um, they are finally installed. Um, it has been four years getting it done. My goal with it was to enable, uh, the switch to electric vehicles. And in particular, by doing it, by having a place where you come to work, where you can charge there. And so people at the school that are working there now have that. Um, and so I'm very happy that we were successful in doing this, especially no cost to the town. Um, I think this is great. And I also want to point out that the entire process, although it was long and, and tiresome, all of the boards worked together very well to make it happen. They didn't all get their way in every situation. But the Select Board, the Energy Task Force, the FinCom, the Planning Board, the School Committee, the Historical Commission, they all had to weigh in at some point and I've probably forgotten one. But, but literally everyone worked together really well, so I think it's great. In any case, everything is now set up. I volunteered to help when I saw them actually get installed, to actually get the charging and stuff, uh, running so that the town actually makes revenue off of the electricity that we're, um, now selling. And so it is now set up in a way that is approximately going to enable the town to break even. Or better, um, depending on how much volume we can actually achieve. And so, you know, roughly, people at home pay about 25 cents per kilowatt hour, um, for the total, uh, electric that they have, which is the generation and the distribution. We are charging 24 cents, so it's slightly less. This is to encourage people to actually use them. If we were to charge more than you pay at home, we would probably not have that. So that's, that's an encouragement. However, it's not so much less that we expect hordes of people to show up. So, Exactly, um, so, so that's that. Um, there is an, uh, an interesting problem with the way EverSource is charging us for the electricity, which are these things called demand charges. There's a long explanation for them. The short story with it, you know, I'll try not to make it a long story. Basically, it works great for a business to have this, but not for an electric charging meter. So the Department of Public, Public Utilities is trying to get EverSource to come up with a better meter rate. In the meantime, we've had to kind of limit the amount of electricity that we throw out through these things without, so that we don't get charged an excessive amount by EverSource, okay? And that happens to be around 10 kilowatts, so, um, but a single car charging can get the full 7.2, which is capable of. And once you get more than one car, then it starts to, uh, to slow them down essentially. But with the teachers, I think that's a fine thing. And, uh, I'll also point out that we're very carefully not charging for being plugged in after you're fully charged. A lot of places do that. We're intentionally not doing that because we don't want teachers to have to run out between classes and move their cars. I think that would be ridiculous. So, uh, so things are in really good shape right now. There's, uh, part of the town's, uh, employment base, um, is, uh, is a guy, Steve Bastek. He's taking over as the network manager. Right now, he and I are the only two people that have access to the ChargePoint portal. And I had it just in order to set all this stuff up. Steve Bastek is going to be taking over. Um, and so if you wanted to make changes in the future, or if we needed to make changes in the future, he is the one that has that capability. Okay? Tim Goddard also had the capability, so you might want to have, you know, an additional person in case something happens.
Right.
So, but it should be a, a paid town employee. I don't think we should have, you know, eventually I should be removed from this because I shouldn't be controlling how much you guys make. So, so, uh, so anyways, everything is, is in good shape right now. The, uh, the one thing that we've left to the Select Board that you need to decide is what kind of electricity, um, we're going to be powering these things on. And this, um, is a little bit complicated because when a new meter shows up, EverSource starts charging based on their basic rate, which it turns out is a lot more expensive than everything on our CCA, on our, uh, so, uh, so any of the choices you pick is better than EverSource. I, uh, I think, um, you have basically three choices. You can decide tonight, you can decide tonight or you can decide at some point in the future, but we should move to something. The, the three choices are the standard, um, which is what everybody uses at home unless they've opted for something different. There's the basic, which is basically brown power, um, powered by coal. I think people would laugh at us if we're underneath the solar array, we powered electric vehicles by coal. It'll be crazy. Um, and then there's the 100% green, which is what the solar array is producing. The, the choices you have on that, um, basically the amount that we pay for the electricity is always less than the amount that we're currently charging because the way the meter runs is we have a reduced relative to, uh, a residentially ever reduced amount for the distribution charge. So that's what enables the town to make a little bit of money off of each transaction. It's literally on the order of like two or three cents. And so whichever one of these you pick will make a little bit more or a little bit less. Bob Zog and I are actually recommending, um, the 100% green. And there's a few reasons for that. And I think basically I can boil it down to this. If you try to make the most money, you'll get like half the people in town to be happy with it, but the other half will be upset that you're using brown power to do it, right? Um, if you try to go the opposite extreme and do something that's, uh, you know, too green, in this case, it's perfectly fine to go to 100% green, but you could have all the environmentalists happy, but all the people that are concerned about fiscal, uh, responsibility unhappy. In this case, I think the 100% green actually gets us the best of both worlds where you can both make money for the town, you can be, uh, environmentally sensitive and you actually end up at a place where the users pay less than what they would at home. So it's a win for everyone if you select the 100% green. You might be able to make a little bit more per kilowatt by selecting the standard or the other one, but I would worry that you would then, uh, lose some of the possible volume. And really with this situation, we're looking for volume, right? We need a lot of people to be charging. I would like to encourage Carlisle residents to charge there during non-school hours, right? You know, it's, it is cheaper and it does help the town, so it's a good thing to do. So.
It's a,
These are the three, sorry, in your packet is where you have these three choices that,
Yes.
Jonathan was just describing at the end, yeah, go ahead, David.
Jonathan, so the electrons that the solar collector collects go somewhere and some other juice comes in through the charger then, right? I guess I never understood. I thought it came right out of the thing, but I guess that's,
No, it's not direct, um, and it has to do with the ownership of the, uh, the various electrical parts there. And so EverSource needs to own the parts that feed the chargers because we, you make ready. But Ameresco owns the part that feeds the grid.
Right.
And so it actually has to go from the solar panels to the grid. It literally goes across the road.
Right.
Um, and then comes back in.
Right.
But that little bit is,
Right.
EverSource.
Right, but our electrons don't find their way back. They go into some pool, oh, they do.
Well, I mean, once it hits the grid, they're going to find their way back.
Regardless, oh, in minority, but not an actual conduit of.
It's not, yeah, it's not a dedicated conduit.
It's pooled and then reduced, okay, thank you. Uh, one other question, in your report, you talked about, um, three arrays and six arrays, I mean, how many stations do we have?
There are currently three stations, each one has two ports, so we can charge six cars.
So you can charge six.
Yep, and that's expandable. Um, I think we, we have more than we need right now. There is one, uh, employee at the school who parks there every day and charges, and that's about all we're getting right now. But I think as we get more electric vehicles, you'll see more there. But I think we're good for a few years, um, and then we do have the ability to expand to more.
It's a credit card or what's the method by which?
It's the ChargePoint, um, so anyone who has an,
Have an app or something.
Has the ChargePoint app, you just do it through their app, yeah.
Other questions, comments? I have a couple. I think we have a little deficit right now because of the kind of glitch in the,
Yes.
Stuff. So would it make any sense to try to recoup some of that by using the standard for a while and then switching to 100% in order to kind of speed that up?
You would recoup it that way. I could be wrong, but really what you're looking for, I think, is the volume of people charging. Because if you, if you look at it, the difference is going to be, you know, about like a cent and a half or something, um, after basic cuts take out, maybe, maybe two cents.
It's like two and a half cents.
Okay, two and a half cents.
About 14 cents a car.
Yeah, well, it depends on how long, how long you charge, right?
Yeah.
But what you might end up with is a situation where people intentionally won't go there to charge because you're not using green power, right?
So you're, you're, you're morally more counting on residents who didn't put in a, a charging station in their garage or, or,
Or who want,
And they're so cheap.
Electricity or, or altruistic and want the town to make money off them, you know, whatever.
Yeah, I think, I think, yeah, that seems, you know, I'm, I'm not sure how many people are going to drive, you know, to the school to plug in if they can plug in at home.
Bikes, my electric bike back home while it's charging for four hours here. I mean, we're, standing around in the playground, you know.
Well, you know, I,
How much, how much of a deficit do we have?
Um, so, yes, this is a, this is an interesting problem. So the reason that I got involved is we saw the electric chargers get installed, but the town hadn't set up the interface with ChargePoint. And so we were giving out the electricity for free. And as soon as it hit the app showing that we were giving out the electricity for free, literally it was like over Christmas vacation, hordes of people showed up to consume it. And so we gave out a lot of electricity for free.
People see that on the app.
Yes.
Well, because if you go on the ChargePoint app, they will tell you where there are charging stations and, yeah. So.
So, in any case, if you actually look at the charges, the vast majority of the charges were not per kilowatt hour, it was these demand charges. And the demand charges added up to over $900. And so we are currently in the hole, I believe, by about a thousand dollars. I would have to get the exact amount.
It's pretty much what the town accountant said today.
Yeah. So, uh, you know, the, I don't know who you want to blame, you can blame me, right? Because I wasn't around to fix it.
But you're putting a cap on it now, you, at the 9.9.
Yeah, so the, the demand charges aren't going to happen anymore. I need to check the bill to make sure, but, um, but we believe that's not going to be happening. And I believe we're charging about as close as we can in terms of the 24 cents. If we charge much more than that, then we're going to probably lose people because they can che- charge cheaper elsewhere or at home particularly. And, yeah, then we need to decide, do we think we're going to get more volume by using green power? Or do we think we're going to make it up on the extra two cents by using the standard? So I, you know, you could argue it either way. I really don't have, you know, I don't have the crystal ball that's going to tell you which way to go. And, and I think either answer is, is viable.
And, um, if we wanted to try one of these and see what happens over a period of time, what's involved in changing the option? Is it, again, we, we have to vote on it and then is it, what, what's the technical, you know, way that it gets changed?
So this is, uh, how any meter gets changed for the town, right? And so I believe you would ask the town administrator to call EverSource and change it.
And so similar,
It's colonial.
Yeah, colonial, who, somebody,
Yeah.
Changes it.
And, and so similarly, if we decided to see, you know, try this out for a couple of months and see what happens, we could then make a different decision. we could then make a different decision in a couple of months.
Yep.
Yeah.
Now, mind you, right now, the, the EverSource is charging us eighteen dollars a month for the existence of the meter. So you're not going to lose, I mean, going forward, you're not going to lose a ton of money, right? If you choose one or the other and we don't get a whole lot of volume. So your, your risk is relatively minor going forward, and, you know, I look at it as that's a sunk cost, right?
Yeah, yeah, and we don't know what will happen over the summer either, right? When there are not teachers coming.
Right.
To school every day.
Yeah, and, and I think when we don't have teachers coming there, that's when we want to try to encourage town residents to come there. Or, you know, if they're visiting ferns, the library, town hall.
Our employees over here.
Yeah, yeah. Did you want to come make a comment? Uh, come please, yeah.
Sorry, I know I'm not part of this here.
In our, in our.
On thirty of all roads.
Thank you.
Um, yes, um, but I work at a place that, um, has had electrical chargers for some time. And what we've found is actually the employees who are on those chargers all the time are our younger employees who are renters. And anyone who's renting in town or renting or in a condo.
Right.
They don't have the option of changing, um, changing the configuration of the home. Also, anyone commuting from a city, say even the smaller cities around here, and they really have no option other than the public chargers. And so I think you'll find they're used in the summer. I know the ones we have on our Midas campus are.
Okay. Um, all right, well, um, my, I guess I'll, I'll speak first and say my own feeling is that we should try the optional green. And that's because, uh, I, we have said as a board that environmental sustainability is something we uh, care about and is one of our goals, and, um, I think we should try that.
The hundred percent green, you mean?
Yeah, sorry, the optional green one hundred rather than the standard.
The optional green.
Yeah, or the basic.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The basic I would rule out because it's cold days.
Forget it.
Yeah, I'm fine with optional green.
Me too.
Yeah, Nathan?
He just looks grumpy.
He does, getting laid, huh?
I look grumpy?
You do, not anymore. Now you're smiling.
Um, you know, I, 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 I guess, you know, I, I don't know the finances, the finances of it all. I, I, you know, there is an option that's not a hundred percent green, but is green and could allow us to recoup more of the cost. And, you know, this was supposed to be neutral. Yeah, but I guess we could go, you know, we could, you know, I'm not sure, do you, do you, do you start on a hundred percent green? And, I mean, I'm not sure what you learn there. Then if you start on like the standard and, and then if people aren't coming, if you're not getting the usage, then you go to the hundred percent green. You know, because we were talking earlier about, you know, we could always change it. I think if you start with a hundred percent green, you're not going to learn. Um, so we're just going to stay there. If we start with the standard and we try to recoup some of the money, um, you know, I mean, clearly over Christmas, people weren't worried about green energy. They were all just plugging in and we were probably at whatever, you know, whatever the power company gives us. Um, you know, I'm sure it wasn't green power because we hadn't selected anything.
Right.
So I, I just worry about the, the, the recovering cost. I mean, certainly, you know, uh, environmental sustainability is very important. This is why we put these solar panels up. Um, so I'm not, I'm not at all saying that, you know, let's not go green because we're not environmentally sensitive. But I, you know, I'll go with a hundred percent green, but I, I'm just not sure. Then the argument of we could always change it really makes sense because we're not going, we're just going to stay on a hundred percent green. We're not going to learn anything.
Well, so I, I will say that for the past three and a half months, we've been on EverSource Basic. And so we know what that's doing, right? Um, and it's not a huge amount of people that are clamoring to be there right now, right? It's basically, we've got this one regular charger and the sporadic person that shows up nights or weekends. Um, so if we go to a hundred percent green, then, um, I can change the electronic announcement that says that we're on a hundred percent green. Yuri, that's going to show up in the app.
You, how, how does EverSource parse the electrons? How do they know?
Um, I have no idea how they do this at a global level because I'm sure they just aggregate it all.
Right, so, I mean, is it like, you know, you're paying, I mean, you always, I always wonder you go and.
Like carbon offset.
Right, well, yeah, right, exactly. You're not necessarily not getting coal, like coal, like, oh.
That's right, you're not, you're not actually getting anything. It's just.
Getting what you get no matter what you do. You're just sort of, so it's kind of BS anyway.
Well, it isn't, it isn't because we're also on the CCA, right? And so the CCA is actually what we're paying. We're not paying EverSource for the generation.
The community aggregation.
Right, but we're not getting a different energy. We're actually not getting different energy.
There isn't a different energy pipe.
Putting that energy.
Somebody is, right, yes. In the long run, you're right. If more people.
Supporting the, the demand.
So that's important. So the optics are important.
Yeah.
Exactly.
And so I actually almost don't care what we learn. I think the optics are probably, unless we start losing tons of money, I mean.
We lost tons of money because we didn't charge anything.
No, I know, so we're gonna, we're not.
And, and what I think that proves is that people weren't looking for green energy, they were looking for cheap energy or free.
But we're supposed to be, right, but we're supposed to be above that fray, right?
I totally get it. So I'm just saying that, uh, between the fact that, uh, we're going to be cheaper than home and it will also be green, hopefully that will add to the allure, then people will come here to, and we'll get more.
That, that's my hope, but, you know, I, I'm sorry, downtown Carlisle is not a hotspot for people to show up.
Why do we build a Walmart?
Yeah, so, um.
Wait till that Newcastle, that playground goes in. Oh, my goodness.
So, you know.
Let's go a hundred, let's go a hundred percent green and.
Okay, yeah, all right. Nathan, are you making that motion?
Yep, that's my motion.
Okay, alrighty.
All the nine fifty-seven PM resolution.
Okay, any more discussion? All right, let's take a roll call vote. Arnold, I.
Oh, you'll vote first on this one.
Yeah.
I'm going to vote last.
Vote I.
Reed, I.
Brown, I.
Thank you all, thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you, Jonathan, appreciate it. Did the dog bark on your drive, uh?
We, we didn't notice.
You did know, it did.
We drove past really fast.
All right, good night.
Thanks. Yeah, all right, thanks very much. Um, all right, I think we are done, aren't we not?
Yeah, you want Steve to have his first meeting to end on time, that's.
Yeah, look at it, it's nine fifty-eight, Steve. Any last, uh, comments, Steve?
Our select board went to eleven thirty last night, so.
Woo, okay, aren't you glad you were done?
We're not in Congress. We're glad we're not Congress.
Alrighty, I'd like a motion to adjourn.
Wait, whoa, 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 sorry.
Oh, liaison reports.
I'm going to chew up your two minutes, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, Luke, sorry, sorry, sorry.
So a couple of liaison things. Uh, one is the DPW, um, I, I talked with Gary and Chris about the fees. So there was some confusion, right? So right now they charge a hundred per grave, right? So it's not a lot, it's a grave, right? And then there's a hundred per grave for the perpetual care, right? So they were concerned that if we raise that too dramatically, which I guess two hundred to eight hundred kind of is, um, that there'd be a rush on plots, which we kind of saw.
Yeah.
Um, so they were talking about a, a, a smaller increase in that, so maybe like a hundred and fifty per grave and then a hundred fifty for the perpetual care. Um, but again, like we spoke the last time, they lose money on the, the, the opening, right? So apparently there are four different types of openings. They can open, let's do a full, uh, full burial, full burial on a weekend, a cremation or a cremation weekend. I, I don't think we should split hairs. Um, and, I mean, they were kind of for, you know, because it's less work for the cremation and stuff, but really.
Yeah.
Um, you know, and then, and then regular versus weekend, I think at the end of the day, that's kind of going to be a wash. Um, anyway, so we, basically if we increase that, so if we went like a hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifty, and then like four hundred from two hundred, um, to the burial fees, uh, you know, they don't know the exact number, right? Um, as to where the break even point would be, but again, their concern was that if we raise it too dramatically, I mean, I don't think people are going to start opening graves just to open them, right? But, um, but again, and, you know, their point too is that it's for Carlisle residents, past Carlisle residents, right? So try to cut people some slack. Um, so in a sense, it would be going to three hundred and four hundred as opposed to eight hundred and staying at two hundred. And then they, they wouldn't lose, um, the cost, um, on the guy's time, time to go in and, and do the openings. So, so that's where, I, I don't know if we necessarily need to vote on it, maybe, I don't know, so we don't get another rush on graves next week.
Isn't this going to town meeting? Now, isn't this already in the warrant?
No, no, we didn't have an actual dollar amount. It was just what we voted on.
So this would go in the motions handout, yeah.
So.
Well, I definitely think we should cover the costs, uh, and so we're not losing money.
Yeah.
Yeah, and this, this, this is a point that I brought up, um, in that meeting was, you know, Gary, he did think that the opening was the bigger concern for him than the lot itself.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, he reiterated that.
Um, so, we, did we vote, we did vote on the dollars as a board, so.
Let me just clarify one thing, though. So for instance, the lots that we sold tonight.
Yep.
That does not include the charge for the opening, does it?
No, the opening happened, yeah, the opening happened and said opening.
Okay, so, so those guys didn't see, might not have seen.
No, see, so that's what we do. We just put a false statement in the mosquito. It could be a thousand dollars, we'll sell them all.
Okay, no, I just wanted to clarify though, so the, the, I think it's important for us to stop losing money.
Yes, yes.
I think we should also increase the, the, somewhat the price of the, of the plots, but let's definitely cover our costs for opening. Um, and, um.
So do you, um, are you ready to, um, propose a different structure, fee structure?
Yeah, so I, I think basically what I was saying was, you know, I think Gary's even a little skeptical of even going over the hundred. Um, but if we did three hundred for the grave opening and the perpetual care, so the three hundred total. Right?
And, um.
And then the opening fee. And then the opening fee would be.
It's currently two hundred now.
Yeah, it's currently two hundred, which they take a shellacking on.
How much of a shellacking?
Because it, well, it's a couple of guys, you know, at least a half a day over the weekend equipment, right? So it's, so that's significant, you know? Yeah, it's all overtime. Um, you know, I mean, obviously if they do it during the week, it's less, but who knows when it's going to be, right?
Right.
So, you know, somewhere probably in the five to six hundred dollar range would be more reasonable. You know, because then there's also that whole thing too with the, you know, like they just bought a new tractor, right?
Right.
I mean, and you need this for this sort of thing, so that, that in a sense would feed that fund.
As well, yeah. So you're, what you're suggesting is, um, three hundred for the grave and the perpetual care.
Yep.
And five, five hundred for the opening?
Yeah, I think five would be.
Five to six hundred, but five hundred.
I think five would be fine, yeah.
And what we had said, what did we vote on before?
It was eight hundred and two, we kept the, we kept the opening the same.
Gotcha, so it was, it was, um, five hundred and.
It was eight hundred and two hundred, yeah.
Eight hundred and two hundred, okay.
Okay, and I think, I think we should revisit the opening fees, you know, once a year or once every two years.
Yeah, based on costs, right.
Based on costs.
Yeah, yeah. All right, so, um, Luke, do you want to make a motion to that effect tonight?
Sure, yeah, 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 yeah. So I moved that the, would we be considered the cemetery commission?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, that we as the cemetery commission, um, change the grave fee to a hundred and fifty dollars, the perpetual care fee to a hundred and fifty dollars per grave, and the grave opening fee to five hundred dollars.
Second. Yeah, and that, that, that we recommend that to the, uh, make a motion to that effect to the.
At town meeting.
A town meeting.
Yeah, all right.
So when you buy the plot, you pay a hundred fifty, that's all you pay?
You pay three hundred because you, you pay the perpetual care piece too. Yeah, that's fine, thanks.
Um, all right, uh, any more discussion? All right, let's take a roll call vote then. Uh, Luke, you want to go first?
Vote I, yeah.
Arnold, I.
Brown, I.
Vote I.
Reed, I.
All right.
Okay, sorry, and then, then the last thing for CPC, we did finally vote on everything. Um, so we are going to have five things go in a town meeting. Um, I don't have the dollar numbers off the top of my head, but basically it's like three hundred and twenty-five thousand for the castle project. Um, they've got about a million dollars in fundraising funds, so we need people to fundraise, there's people to do it. Um, uh, there are a lot of stipulations in there because some of the things that they have CPA funds can't be used for, but in the grand scheme of things, it's, you know, they, they, it's a small percentage of the, of the overall cost. Um, the second thing is, uh, it's a ten percent match for a dog park at Banta Davis. So, um, uh, one of the things with the grant application is that they need to, not our grant, the, the dog park grant, is that they need to have a ten percent match, uh, of town funds. So, so that's what they're going for. I think it's about thirty thousand. Um, uh, that'll be up at Banta Davis, uh, they'll present, and then the, uh, dam at the Cranberry Bog, so not nearly as big as Greeno, but, um, it was, it was unclear as exactly what needs to be done, so they're, basically this is for the engineering piece of it. It's, it's eleven thousand five hundred. It's actually going to be more because we didn't put the contingency in there. But, uh, it's going to be like twelve, five to do the initial piece to determine exactly what it's going to cost. And then they'll come back with another, um, another application for fall town meeting. Um, yeah, because it was a hundred and some odd thousand, but it wasn't really clear that that was going to get us there, or it might have been too much, so. Um, they'll come back with a better number. Um, there's an application from the housing trust to top up the hundred thousand dollar fund that they have. Um, so, so that's moving to town meeting and then, um, an additional application from the housing trust for twenty-five thousand dollars for rental assistance. Um, that'll be a joint venture with COA and housing trust, so.
So how much is the top off? Didn't we already do the hundred?
Around sixty thousand because we're going to probably use twenty-five K for rental assistance this year out of our current funds.
So did we, what do we originally put in? A hundred or five hundred?
Yeah.
And we've used forty or we will have used, or sixty of it, I guess.
We will have probably used around sixty.
It's just like the working, it's the, the working fund, basically.
Yes, yeah, we're also producing the housing, new housing production plan. By the way, I'm going to put a plug in for that because, uh, Thursday, we're having a forum. I hope some of you will have a chance to, um, dial into that.
Thank you for sitting with sixty thousand people in Yankee Stadium.
Woo.
Yeah, I guess somebody's got to do it.
Yeah.
Wow, okay, all right, uh, great, thanks, Luke.
Yeah, sure.
Luke, can I ask a question?
No.
I thought he was the one that wanted to, you know, go to bed.
Yeah, Nathan does.
Who me? I'm already in bed.
Yeah. Yep.
Is this your last board of selectmen meeting?
I think so.
No.
Board of selectmen meeting, other than town, town.
Not willing, wow, yeah, no, because I'm not here on the nineteenth.
Oh.
Do we usually, do we usually have one after?
We don't have one after that in, in April. Oh, gosh, and May tenth. For.
Have a meeting before.
This is before our first select board meeting, isn't it?
Just in case, I just want to say, you know, we've been on the board for how long together now? Um, forever, I think.
Six years, yeah.
Nathan took a year off and he just couldn't stay away from you.
I like to think he's, I'm the reason he came.
I came back despite Luke being on the board.
We did the break.
But it, it's been, it's been a true pleasure, um, working with you on the board, Luke, and, and hopefully you're not going to stop being on all of the things that you're working on.
Maybe not.
But it's been, it's been truly a pleasure and, uh, you've been a great mentor to me and, um, you know, your energy and the amount of time that you spend in the, in the town is, is truly awe inspiring, and you're going to be tremendously missed. Um, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Making it up here as you're going along, but thank you.
I was.
You're full of, yeah, you're full of, you know what, but I appreciate it.
I'll tell you what I really think later.
Yeah, no, exactly, yeah.
Like you did to me, but, um.
Well, we, we should have planned this better because here we are at the end of the meeting.
No, we, we should invite him to the first next board.
The one in May?
Yeah.
Just to, just to be cruel?
No, we should, we should, we should have a proper send off.
Well, we will.
Do it at town meeting with a bang.
Yes, we will do it. It will happen at town meeting, but, um.
Then we'll really embarrass you there.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, yeah.
But Luke, I do want to say just for myself that, um, you know, I came on the board, uh, when you were re-elected for your, you know, last term. And so we've served together for three years and, um, it's, it's really been a, a great experience for me and I have appreciated your support for me a lot, um, and. And we may have had a few little exchanges, but you know, that's the good thing about being able to, you know, work together and communicate. And I've learned a lot from you and I, I just wanted to express my appreciation before this large audience that we have here. But to, you know, publicly say thank you.
Yeah, me too. We go back a lot of different boards.
A long time, yeah.
I appreciated your support when I was on the other side of the table. And I'm sorry we only had a couple of years together, but thanks for, especially, you know, the, but behind the scenes work on all these departments. You know, people don't realize, I think, the, the relationship building is, you know, the many departments you've interfaced with. You've probably done the most of anybody I know.
It's gonna, everybody's gonna get to sharing the wealth, though.
I know, I'm, I'm, I'm cringing. I actually was thinking about that. I was thinking about that long list of assignments you have and how we're gonna divvy those up. Luckily, you know, there'll be at least one new person. And I see Brian on the call, so Brian, if you're the guy, you better get ready.
There he is.
And I, I guess. I will actually write you a card.
All right. Well, then I do think a motion to adjourn is in order.
To move.
Second, I will second that.
All right, I'm sure we have a lot of discussion. And, all right, roll call vote. Who wants to go first tonight?
Reed, I.
Arnold, I.
Oscar, Lilo, I.
All right, your last vote, Luke.
Good night, everyone.
Ready to retire for a bit.
Thank you, Steve.